Good morning, everyone. And thank you for attending our special meeting for April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you can, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the next item of the agenda is approval of the special meeting agenda.
With approval.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, I have a second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next item, which is going to be proclamations. We have under a consideration of proclamation, Mental Health Awareness Month. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. County of Grant proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health, and whereas mental illnesses affect almost every family in America, and whereas people with mental illnesses make important contributions to our families and our communities, and whereas only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment for his or her mental illness, and whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help, and research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with a mental illness, and whereas people with mental illnesses recover if given the necessary services and supports in their communities, and whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses, and whereas Silver Consolidated School District and their community partners have invested in mental health services for students, their families, and community members, including implementation of wellness rooms staffed by mental health professionals in each school, as well as resources, trainings, and supports for parents, grandparents, and guardians, and whereas greater public awareness about mental illnesses can change negative attitudes and behaviors towards people with mental illnesses. And now therefore, the Board of Grant County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month, and also call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and seal of the County of Grant to be affixed in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, this twenty-third day of April, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to take this moment to make the comment that I invited Silver Schools and Joyce Varela and their partners here today to present about what they're doing at Silver Schools on mental health, because I think the project that Silver Schools is doing demonstrates the fact that if we're willing to invest significant money in addressing mental health and behavioral health, it makes a significant difference. And I really think that what Silver Schools is doing is the most progress that we're making on mental and behavioral health in Grant County right now, and maybe even this part of the state. So thank you so much, Joyce, and all your hard work, and everybody who's working with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do you want to have them come up?
Yeah. Yes, please. Thank you.
Next item under the agenda for proclamations is consideration of proclamations, School Lunch Hero Day. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. County of Grant proclamation for School Lunch Hero Day. Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day, and whereas school lunch is the most important and nutrient-rich meal of the day for many children, and whereas the staff of the Cobra Consolidated School District Nutrition Department is committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to the district's children, and whereas the staff of the Silver Consolidated School District Nutrition Department is committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to the district's children, and whereas the staff of charter and private schools are committed to providing healthful and nutritious meals to their students, and whereas the women and men who prepare and serve meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support, and whereas our Grant County nutrition professionals have a lot on their plate between preparing healthy food, adhering to strict nutrition standards, navigating student food allergies, and offering service with a smile, and whereas our Grant County nutrition professionals must balance many roles and follow numerous federal, state, and local regulations to ensure safe and healthy meals are available in schools, and whereas School Lunch Hero Day provides the opportunity for the whole community to thank these hard-working heroes. Now therefore, the Grant County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May third, two thousand and twenty-four, as School Lunch Hero Day, express our deep appreciation to these valuable employees, and commend their good work on behalf of children. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and seal of County of Grant to be affixed in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, this twenty-third day of April, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we pass this proclamation.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Edwards. I have a second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion, Commissioner Edwards.
Yes, I just want to say that I spend a lot of time in the cafeterias in Silver and Cobra School Districts. And the folks who work in those cafeterias and the people in administration that support them go above and beyond to meet the needs of our children, not just around school lunches, but I see how much our cafeteria staff care about the kids and go out of their way to make sure that they have what they need in the cafeterias. I just want to express my deep appreciation to everyone in Grant County who works on behalf of our children in the cafeterias of our schools. Thank you so much.
Any further discussion, Commissioner? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
And we do have somebody to accept this proclamation.
Okay, moving on to the next item is going to be presentations. Under item C, we have presentation by Silver Schools School District Mental Health Grant, Ms. Joyce Varela and Ms. Cindy Barris.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I will be presenting along Cindy was unable to attend today. So I want to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share what Silver Schools has been doing in the area of mental health. We did receive a significant school-based mental health grant last year of six million dollars. The purposes of the grant was to increase the number of licensed credential school-based mental health providers. So to this year, we hired four. We've hired an additional two for next year, and we're still looking for another two providers for next year for a total of eight through the grant. The other goals of the grant is to retain the current providers that we have, not only through the grant, but the current counselors and social workers that are already employed with the district, and to also give all students access to direct services. So we do have counselors at all schools, we have social workers at all schools. The social workers that are currently in the schools, they're limited to working with students who have IEPs and special needs, and the counselors have a lot of other responsibilities. So we wanted to be able to provide students access anytime throughout the day if they needed some mental health support, and I'll talk a little bit about how we're doing that here in just a minute. And the other goal is to increase the qualified workforce in Grant County, because through the grant, we are hiring interns out of Western to do a year internship, and then we're keeping some of those positions open for the intern positions. And so we will be providing qualified licensed providers when they finish their internship to the rest of the community. So we'll be able to increase that workforce in all of Grant County. The initial grant initiatives were to create wellness rooms in each of the campuses, and I'll show you some pictures and talk about that. And again, increase the number of mental health providers, access to all students. And then the other thing that we're doing is providing some supports to families and parents throughout the year too, and I'll talk about how we're doing that. So first off is wellness rooms. The wellness rooms, it's a place where students can come anytime that they feel like they need to reset, refocus, they need to re-regulate. So if they're having a bad day, something happened at home, or they had an issue with a friend and they're not feeling it, and they're having trouble focusing in the classroom, they can come to the wellness room for ten minutes. There's a provider in there if they need somebody that they need to talk to. They can reset, get re-regulated. We have a lot of different tools in the wellness room that they can use to help them re-regulate. And then they go back to class ready to learn and be more productive, which is the whole purpose is to allow students to be more ready to learn and focus on their academics. So here are some pictures of the wellness rooms. At Silver Scholars, we're doing something a little bit different because of the makeup of the four-way program. They have calming corners instead of an actual room where they can go to. So the corners are part of their classroom built into their center, so students can go there to re-regulate as need be. Here's our Sixth Street, this is our kindergarten school. So students again come in throughout the day. We do have some students at Sixth Street who actually start first off in the wellness room, so they're refocused, ready to go back to their classroom to learn. Jose Barrios, we do have the wellness room there at their school as well. And every wellness room is just a little bit different based on the needs of the students. And what we do in the wellness room may vary a little bit as well, depending on what the students need. So again, just showing pictures of all the different wellness centers throughout the schools. When setting up the wellness centers, we did really think about the five senses. We do have diffusers in there, so we have the smells, we have the low lighting, we have the calming. So again, just thinking about all the different senses that are going to help the students to refocus and re-regulate when they come into the room. Our wellness rooms have been very well utilized this year. The first column shows how many visits we've had to date, and well, actually through March twenty-second. So we had two thousand five hundred twenty-one kids who have actually utilized the wellness rooms. Many of those are repeat kids who need to come into the rooms, so a total of six hundred thirty-nine different students. So these are students that may not have been seeking out support had we not had the wellness rooms available for them to come to. There are other things that are happening in the wellness rooms as well, besides the students coming in to refocus and re-regulate. Some of the schools are doing groups for the students. So we have anxiety groups, depression groups, grief groups, different groups that, again, depending on the individual needs of the students. Some of the wellness providers are providing SEL classes in the classroom where they're teaching kids the strategies to help them focus again and re-regulate. Because one of our goals is even though we have the wellness rooms and we want them utilized, one of our goals is to teach the students some coping skills so that they can be able to utilize those in their classrooms, so they're not having to always leave the classroom to come to the wellness room. We do have yoga that has been provided through the wellness rooms as well, adding cliff. And we have lunch bunch groups for kids come in during lunch and just have opportunity to speak with the provider about some of the things that are going on in their life. And then we will also be providing the wellness rooms during the summer programs. We do have summer programs at the elementary, the middle school, and the high school in Silver Schools. And so the wellness rooms will be open in all of those schools so that we can continue to provide the service for the students who may need it. We do have family supports that we're providing as well through the grant. Through the Cook Center, parents are able to go in. Our parents, students, or families are able to go in and ask a therapist questions. Maybe a question may be, you know, I'm having a difficult time getting my child off the phone. What recommendations do you have? And within twenty-four hours, they get a response from the therapist. We also have free parent coaching. Where parents sign up for coaching, they do meet with their coach once a week via phone or virtual. So they do have that service that's available to them. We have on-demand courses, so we have a whole library of courses that are available to our parents that they can go in anytime and select from. We also have live trainings, which every month, we were having two trainings per month. We have a variety of different topics. We've had ADHD, suicide prevention, social media, how to help your child be successful. And so we do stream those live with the presenter, so parents and families can watch those presentations from home. We also do open up the boardroom at the administration office, so if parents want to come in and watch the videos as a group. And then we have some of our social work providers that come in. And so if parents want to have additional conversations after their live trainings, that support is available to them as well. These are the trainings that we've had. So we've had a hun- four hundred and seventeen families, parents that have participated in the trainings. If parents sign up for the trainings and they're not able to attend, they do get access to a recording so they can watch the training on their own time. And you can see again, a lot of topics that are pertinent to our parents. You know, what they need to know about suicide prevention, how to motivate their child, bullying, how to stop the cycle, substance abuse, and vaping. So a lot of topics that are on a lot of people's mind is what we were trying to cover throughout the year. We also have service through Carisalas. So if families need to be connected with a local therapist, or they want to be connected to a therapist, but they don't want anybody local, they can be connected to a service provider virtually that they can meet with on a regular basis, either themselves. So again, it's open for students, for staff, and for families, and these services are free to our families. Other things that are happening through our mental health grant, students did do a connectivity survey. So it measures the impact of the school culture and the climate. How do the students feel about their homework? How do they feel about their school? How do they feel about themselves as learners? And then the teachers do get access to interventions that they can do with the students based on the responses that they have on the surveys. We also have an app called Alongside. It is using artificial intelligence, but students can go into the app and they can chat with Kiwi if they don't want to come to the wellness room or they just again need somebody to talk to, but they're not really willing to talk to a live person. Because one of the things that we've had to deal with again is the stigma of mental health. And some people are still a little bit hesitant about reaching out for mental health support, so we're hoping to break down some of those barriers. But in this app, they do have videos. Students are able to respond to journal topics that are provided for them, or free response to journals. There's a mood tracker that students can go back and see over the last month, over the last couple of weeks, what has their mood looked like? They are also able to message their counselor if they feel that they need somebody that they can talk to. Maybe they just don't want to go reach out to the counselor in person. They can do it through this app, and then they can also set goals. So this year, we are piloting this app at the high school. We have over four hundred students that have signed up for the app and sixty students who are using it on a regular basis. Next year, we'll be rolling it out to the other schools so that all students in fifth grade through high school can have access to the app. And if students indicate anywhere where they're speaking with Kiwi through the chat and they indicate anything about self-harm, we are immediately notified. And we do then intervene with our counselors or social workers to respond and meet with that student and see what's going on with them. And we also have additional support with some of our partners. We do have HMS is providing a counselor to implement the student group at the middle school and the high school. We were trying to do it after school, but we weren't having a whole lot of response. So we continue to revise and adapt to meet student needs. And we did start this group during lunch, and we're having a better response doing it that way. We also have Winborn who is supporting Silver Scholars. Again, because of lack of mental health providers, we were struggling to fill all our positions. And so we did contract with Winborn, and they're working directly with teachers to help them with strategies to help students in the classroom. And they're also working with individual students and families to support their children. We're also getting interns from Western. So we have that partnership with them as well through the social work program and the counseling program. And then we do send referrals to recovery management center as well. The wellness staff that we hired through the grant, we really focused on SEL Day this year, which was March eighth. We did a lot of activities throughout the schools, classroom lessons. We really focused on kindness this year, so we had raffles. Students were caught doing various acts of kindness. They were given raffle tickets, and they had an opportunity to win gift baskets that were filled with all kinds of sensory tools, fidgets, thinners, all kinds of different things like that to help them with their mental health. We did have a mini-career fair at the high school as well, where we focused on mental health, and we did invite some mental health providers to come and speak with students as well. And then we also gave tokens of appreciation for all staff because we have to consider staff's mental health as well. Again, as we have the proclamation today, we will be focusing on May as Mental Health Month and having various activities throughout the different schools. The other thing that we're looking at for next year, we've done some research on the benefits of music and its impact on mental health. And so for next year, we are going to be implementing music in the elementary schools. In fact, tomorrow, we have a visit to Los Cruces Public Schools, where we're going to go visit some of their music classrooms to see how they're implementing it so that we can be more ready to implement music in our schools. And then the next phase of the grant, what we're working on for next year, is campus-wide wellness renovations. So working on making our schools a lot more inviting. So looking at the entrance areas, instead of some of the chairs that we have, maybe bringing in couches, bringing in, you know, coffee tables and lamps, and just making it a lot more appealing and inviting for students and parents. We want to do the same thing for the libraries. Libraries a lot of times are the hub of the schools, so making those comfortable environments for students. So again, bringing in alternative seating for students, because not everybody functions well on a regular chair. So we have ball chairs, we have different types of chairs that the students can select from. So we're working on implementing those in the libraries. And then also various student gathering areas, like at the high school, working on the commons. At the middle school, setting up an area in each of the hallways so that the students can have those as gathering areas. And that's nice. So, thank you so much for allowing the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Varela, and thank you for everything that you do. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Brown?
We've got it, though. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you, Lucy, for inviting us, Varela. That was the most positive thing I've heard in a very long time. I was sitting here getting my own dopamine increase just listening to it, so. It's so awesome that you started music. I really, really think that's great. This is a special program of the state that Silver applied for and received funding for, is that right?
It's a federal grant.
It's federal, right? What are the cha- this might be beyond your perspective, but the chances of other school districts doing similar things?
I believe that they just had some additional applications. I'm not sure if anybody else from the state applied. I think we're the third district in the state that received this funding last year. We received the most funding from the other schools. But it is a grant that is available for anybody to apply for.
Fabulous. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Edwards?
No.
I just wanted to mention that the acronym SEL, would you tell the public what SEL means?
Social Emotional Learning. And Social Emotional Learning, really, it's about, it's really about relationships. How do students relate to their peers? How do they relate to their staff? How do people relate to each other?
Thanks for that clarification. Thank you, Joyce. Great presentation. And like I said earlier, I agree with Commissioner Brown. This is the most positive thing happening, I think, in this arena. Thank you for all your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Moving on to the next item is going to be under D recognition of county employee, five years of dedicated service. County manager?
Mr. Chairman, members of the boardroom, I'd like to present a certificate. And a gift to Sam Samuel Hernandez for five years of working with the county. Sam, where are you? He began his employment five years ago with the treasurer's office and then promoted into the manager's offices, accounting specialist, and then moved on and was promoted to payroll specialist. So, Sam, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, moving on to the next item is, I can have a motion to open up a public hearing and discussion regarding ordinance O dash twenty-four dash zero one, Grant County Fire and Emergency Service Administrative Ordinance and ordinance providing for administration of the county fire departments. So I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, I have a second by Commissioner Edwards. Do we have any discussion?
Could have been Brown.
I mean, Brown.
Unchangeable.
There you go. Commissioner, do we have any discussion? Okay.
No, I think I want to just briefly address some of the comments. You asking for discussion from the public or from the?
I'm asking discussion for each, so we can vote to open the.
Oh, on the hearing?
The hearing.
Very good. No discussion on that, sorry. Jump to the gun.
Do we have any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We are now in a public hearing. If anybody wants to come up here and testify, you will be sworn under oath. So do we have anybody for the public hearing that wants to talk?
I can't hear you.
Okay, we're in a public hearing. If you want to have any input on the ordinance, which is for providing administration. which is, uh, for providing administration for the county fire departments, you can come up and be sworn in and give testimony.
I'd, I'd like to speak.
On this?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, okay.
Actually, it's G, um, or public input, because it's simple.
Okay, we'll get to that in a minute.
I don't understand the difference, that's why I have to speak, I'm sorry.
I think he wants to speak on the fire ordinance.
Ms. Valer, want to talk?
Yeah.
In the fire ordinance?
Yes, about the fire.
Okay.
Volunteer fire department.
Can you come up to the podium, please?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I need you to raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Can you please state your name?
Yeah, my name is Tom Wyatt, I live in the Lake Roberts area, and I'm a member of the Sappio Creek Volunteer Fire Department. May I continue?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for your attention, everybody. Uh, I've been, I've lived in Lake Roberts for four years, and shortly after I moved there, I started going to fire department meetings, and, um, joined the fire department, they, you know, they were hard up for volunteers, so they recruited me. I'm seventy-seven years old, and I got a bad knee, but they still said that there were things I could do in the fire department that would be beneficial. So, here I am, trying to be beneficial. Um, I appreciate you listening to me today. Um, as I understand this ordinance that you're considering, I think that there are two things. One, I think there might be unintentional consequences, and the second one is I feel like a ant trying to hold a boulder up from falling down a cliff. The unintended consequences are, um, when I first come, started going to meetings, one of the things that seemed to, um, attract the attention of our volunteer fire department, where there's, uh, was that we have a whiteboard behind the meeting, where the chief sets, sits, excuse me, and, um, on there, we always had these financial things, like how much money is in each account. Well, you know, within the last year, some of those numbers went from, you know, like, pushing a half million dollars to quite a bit less, maybe, I don't know what it was, thirty or forty thousand. Um, that number seemed to get the, um, members' attention, like we had some power and some influence over what our, um, volunteer fire department could do and might do to help protect our homes and our neighbors' homes from fire. So when that money went off the board, it seemed like a lot of the members, and since I haven't been there long, I'm not a long-term member, um, it seemed like the interest deteriorated quite a bit. And I don't know, y'all got this thing here that you're considering, and I see some, you know, some value to what you're doing, but I don't, I'm not sure that you understand the view from a small volunteer fire department. We're, you know, we're more than an hour from Silver City, we live in the middle of the forest, and, um, there are not many people who live there, so it's hard to recruit. So I think anything that we could do, that y'all can do, to make it more engaging to the public, that they become members of the volunteer fire department, and participate in the training, in the meetings, and firefighting, I'm a, I'm a dispatcher, and I go to all the meetings that I can. When I'm, when I'm at home, I go to the fire department meetings and go to the trainings. Um, but we lost, I think that, uh, the fire department lost a lot of, uh, oof, get up and go, because this money appears to have been taken away from us, as far as our deciding what, what is best for our fire department to do. So, I don't know if you're all aware of that or not, but I want, I wanted you to hear, to make sure that you can put that into your consideration as you're making decisions about this ordinance, is that the right word, is that what we're discussing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I got, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you raise your, okay, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you, please state your name.
Thank you, my name is Midge Jolly, and I live at Lake Roberts, above the firehouse. I am dispatch number four, out of, of course, uh, our limited number of dispatchers. I read this ordinance with great interest, I see quite a bit of value for consistency and continuity, not only our communications with the county, uh, in a format and frame, but also across all of the departments, I can see how it would make things easier from the county's end, with all of our disparate and far-reaching firehouses. As the most rural of Grant County's firehouses, we're not only one hour away from town, but if there's snow on fifteen, we're an hour and a half from town. And so, we don't have a lot of people to draw on, and I personally am wondering how it is going to be that the new fire chief will meet us, will, will there be a meet-and-greet, will the, the new fire chief come to the firehouse, uh, in our house, and meet with us, and, uh, hear about what happens with us, how things work for us? And then I have, I have a piece of business about the ordinance itself. In Article Four, under definitions, the county fire chief is identified as being responsible for the day-to-day operational activities of each individual firehouse. Eight firehouses, across however many miles and space there is, one person is identified as going to be responsible for day-to-day operational activities. This doesn't quite make sense to me, and it further makes less sense when in Article Eight B, the department chief of each of the firehouses is identified as being responsible for the day-to-day operational activities. I do not see how you can move forward with an ordinance that identifies nine different people, one, the fire chief for the county, and the eight fire chiefs, all as responsible for day-to-day operational activities. Now, I recognize that I may not understand some of the finer language as it's identified here, but I believe what I'm saying is accurate, and I, I am concerned about this. My next concern is that, as stated previously, about our distance from everything, our firehouse, well, not everything, we live in the forest, lucky us, our firehouse is the only public building in our community. In the entirety of the boundaries of our fire di- fire district, our firehouse is the only public building, and as such, it hosts meeting for a variety of public entities. Our water association for Lake Roberts, um, MDHAL regularly does things on that, uh, property, like, uh, the medical mobile comes and, uh, does various medical things. And Article Seven, um, states that the, oh, I'm looking at it, isn't that nice, I can read it to y'all. Use, allow, quote, "Allow the use of fire stations by such organizations for meetings, fundraising, and social events, subject to the requirements of county policy dealing with the use of public buildings or facilities, so long as such meetings and events are for the sole benefit of the individual fire department." Well, the water department, the fire, firehouse has its own water, so the, the water, uh, Lake Roberts Water Users Association would have no place to meet, um, the homeowners association would have no place to meet. So this language inside cooperation with private, nonprofit, and auxiliary organizations is also of concern for me. I'd like to close by asking y'all to please, once you've heard the words of today, to seriously consider a second public hearing, where you will answer these issues and allow us to be better informed, as this affects us daily, day-to-day. I can stand on my deck and look down at the firehouse through the trees, so I always know what's going on, plus, there's a base station in my living room. So, it is a matter of academ- of administration to this group of people, but to us, it's our everyday life, and so I would ask you not to move forward today, to hear what the people gathered here have to say, address these issues I've mentioned, and allow us to hear from you once more. Thank you.
Okay, one of the issues I could probably address, and, and the county manager can help me on this, basically, if you look at your chain of command, and the way it's written in both areas is, your department chief is responsible for the day, day-to-day operations, that is your chain of command. Now, that chief has a chain of command going to the Grant County Fire Chief, which is also responsible for the day of day, day-to-day operations. The communication's going to have to be between the department chiefs and the county fire chief to look at what's going on and to offer any support. Now, the Grant County Fire Chief is a Grant County employee, if he's not doing any of this, our county manager can go ahead and, and look at discipline, or et cetera, whatever, for the Grant County Fire Chief not doing what he, what he's doing. So basically, what it is, and I don't know if the county's going to get a schematic of, of the chain of command, but basically, what you have is a chief that's hired by Grant County, that's a Grant County employee, and you have department chiefs. The chain of command goes to your department chief at the Sappio Fire Department, or at the Memres Fort Bear, that fire chief's responsibility is to communicate with the Grant County's Fire Chief, to make sure that the day-to-day operations are going as smooth as possible. I believe that's where it is, I think it's just defined in two different areas, am I right?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
So, that should-
With all due respect to both of you, please, when the first definition identifies specifically the fire chief, county fire chief manages the day-to-day operational activities of fire departments, county-owned fire stations, et cetera, et cetera, nothing about chain of command, or, um, under, uh, under the, uh, authority of, uh, delegating to the fire chiefs, even though in other places, delegation is mentioned, it is not mentioned here, and then on Article Eight B, it does not say, "Under the supervision of the county fire chief," that language leaves a lot of question in my mind. I appreciate your efforts, but-
It, it's sort of like a county manager, she's our county manager, but she has directors, director, she holds her directors responsible for doing the day-to-day operations. Now, as a county commission, we have one employee, that employs a county manager. If we notice that she is not, um, that her employees are not doing what they're supposed to do, then we, as a commission, as a whole body, will talk to our county manager and hold her responsible, so, to me, it, it's the same thing as what we have here.
I, I hear that, sir, and I respectfully disagree, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
I had a question for Ms. Jolly.
Oh, yes, sir, sorry, I, I'm, I apologize, I'll stay until you dismiss me.
No worries, no worries at all, thanks for coming back, uh, it's on the, the question of cooperation with other groups.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, my belief is, the intention of Article Seven is to prevent fundraising from happening at a county building for private groups, not to prevent meetings from happening, it's not phrased clearly that way. My question for you is, would it be acceptable to you, uh, if Article Seven were made clear to specify that all fundraising activities have to be solely for the benefit of the fire department, but that other meetings, for example, for administrative purposes for the water, water group, uh, could happen? Would that address your concern?
I believe that it would.
And so then, county manager, am I correct, in assuming that the interest really is the fundraising part?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brown, uh, yes, so that was the main intent of this, but I would also mention that we also receive guidance from the State Fire Marshal's Office regarding the use of equipment, the use of buildings, and we are discouraged from, um, having activities that do not pertain to, um, operations of fire departments within our fire stations. I understand in communities like ours, who are very rural, and this happens in other counties as well, there are some exceptions that are made, we have, um, water associations that use that, we might have, um, ditch associations that use these buildings, um, but a lot of the, I mean, the regulation around fire departments does not stop with the county, the state also holds us accountable.
Yes.
And so, um, we also have to adhere their advice and their guidance as well. Um, and, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to address one other comment that, um, Ms. Jolly had, in regards to your concern regarding one fire chief having this sort of, um, authority. I would, um, mention that, um, it recently restructured this, and an ordinance, ordinance ties in very closely with the restructure of our departments. We had one employee prior, um, who, um, had, um, wore two hats, and so he had the exact same responsibility, so this was an intent to improve that, so now you have one individual, who is the county fire chief, who provides, um, all of his attention to all of the fire departments, rather than being pulled into numerous different directions. So the intent was for this to be an improvement, and an improvement to, um, provide you with the support and the assistance that you very, um, much deserve. And I would also add that, um, Chief Groves, um, is just a month on the job, and it is his intention to visit each and every one of you personally and attend your meetings. And, um, also, on another happier note, I'd like to congratulate your department on your improved ISO rating that you just, um, that you just received, that was a huge increase, so I think you are doing things very well at your department.
Thank you, I, am I allowed to reply?
Allowed.
May I reply?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, I understand, but in my experience, um, when Mr. Vieja was the person who wore two hats, we came here, he was not involved in day-to-day operational, uh, activities of our firehouse, and so, that's really where this comes, for me, as the saying goes, the rubber meets the road, is that Silver City is a long way from Sappio Creek, not just in miles, but in how things actually operate, and so, I trust that y'all are going to understand that, as we follow these, uh, edicts that come from the state to the county, and now out to Sappio Creek and the other seven fire departments, that the people who are running these by, who are personing these, uh, fire departments, manning them, if you will, that we are all volunteers, and this sounds like, um, there's going to be more work for all of the volunteers, and we're stretched pretty thin as it is, I appreciate y'all's efforts to address these questions. Because the, uh, county manager has stated that fire departments are discouraged from using, uh, firehouses for other, uh, activities, that does not sound like a mandate to refuse the use of them. And because we are in a unique situation, with no other public buildings of any description, it makes sense for a written exception to be included, for something in this language to indicate that our need for the public use, we don't go into the bays when we have our meetings, we stay solely in the kitchen, the bathroom, and the meeting room, we do not wander, we don't touch other equipment, we go there, we hold our meetings, we come out of the building. Uh, if y'all have no other questions for me, I would be ready to be done.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards.
So I don't know that this is a question for you, Ms. Jolly, but I just want to- but I just wanna, um, make a comment for a, it's a question, but it's an open question. So, the language in Article four, Section A, says, "The county fire chief manages the day-to-day operational activities..." dot, dot, dot. And then, it does say, "This will be accomplished in a collaborative partnership with the fire, uh, fire department chiefs." Is the county fire chief managing the day-to-day operational activities or supervising the day-to-day activities?
Thank you.
That's a question. And, um, I understand that our goal, so what our goal is, is to make sure that we have a paid staff person within the county that is directly accountable, um, to everything that is happening on a day-to-day, uh, basis. But if they're working in collaborative partnership with the department chiefs, are they supervising or are they managing? It's a question. I would also, um, I completely, uh, recognize the challenges, um, uh, around, having, uh, other activities in a fire station, because if there's an emergency, you know, who knows what could happen? But I do, um, agree that in an area where, uh, the fire station is the only public building, that, um, we should consider adjusting the language to reflect the fact that, that, um, uh, other entities could use the fire station only in non-fire areas, like the kitchen, bathroom, and meeting room, and that no fundraising shall happen in that building that isn't directly related to the fire department. Seems like we could make that change.
Okay, do we have, we can-
So, just for the record, if we want, uh, just a point of clarification, when we get to the point of, um, when the hearings close and we get to the point of actually voting on the ordinance, we could elect a table for further discussion, or we could vote on it. And then, um, during this discussion period of the actual voting on the ordinance, we could make language changes at that time, just, just so y'all know.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Do we have anyone else that wants to testify? Okay, see, no one, uh, can have a motion to close a public hearing.
So, move.
Second.
So, a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner, uh, Billings to close a public hearing. Any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Moving on to Item G, consideration of Grant County Ordinance O dash twenty-four dash zero-one.
For purposes of discussion, I would like to remove approval of this ordinance.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, have a second by Commissioner Edwards. Discussion, please. Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Sure, I'd, I'd like to, uh, suggest two, I think fairly easy wording changes. Uh, one would be to replace the word manage in Article four with the word supervise. I think that, uh, is more accurate for what that role is. And the second would be, in Article seven, to add the word, to, to change it from "so long as such meetings and events are for the sole benefit of blah, blah, blah", to "so long as any fundraising events are for the sole benefit of the blah, blah, blah". The other meetings that aren't fundraising events would still have to meet county policy with that wording change, and they would still have to obtain the approval of the county manager with that wording change. So, I think that addresses the concerns.
Want a clarification? So, when, uh, the water association meets at the fire station, do they, um, get county approval, like, for the whole year? We're gonna meet on the second Tuesday of every month for 2024? Do they have to have your approval for each meeting?
I'm unaware of. So, I can't answer your question, for sure. I believe they're doing it on their own. They're, they're not asking county administration's approval, no.
But after this ordinance passes, what would be required? I think perhaps writing that out's in the gray area.
That's really what I wanted to know.
Yeah, well, your suggestion is a good one. Would, would you have objections to them obtaining preapproval for a year's worth of meetings?
Can you give me a minute to think about that? I, I'm not sure that that's-
Well, we can give you a month if you have anything to add.
I'm not sure that, um, setting meetings, I mean, I don't know, I don't know their schedule. I don't, I mean, and it depends on, there's a lot of other factors that play into that, so, need a moment, please.
I don't think it's just the Lake Roberts Department that does this. My recollection from several years ago was that the Pinozalta's Water Association met at the Pinozalta's VFD.
Well, and I could be completely wrong about this, but I don't think there's any public buildings in Hatch either.
Hachita.
Hachita, excuse me.
All of a sudden, I'm like-
I knew when that came out of my mouth, that wasn't right. Sorry, hachita. And so, I think that if there was, um, you know, they'd have to be at the fire station there as well for any kind of other public meeting. But we've, we've had this conversation before because, um, there are a lot of rural communities in, in the state that, where the volunteer fire, where the firehouse is the only public building.
So, I'm trying to think when we have, uh, meetings closer. I get notices to attend the water association meeting, but I don't remember what, uh, if it's quarterly or-
The Rosedale?
No, no, 'cause I have, Lake Roberts, 'cause I have my house up there, one of them. But, um, so I'm trying to remember, but, uh, I don't know.
Well, it seems to me like it could be a letter to the county manager. It says, "The water association would like to meet quarterly, 2024", with the dates, and just say, write in the letter, "We are aware that we are, you know, not allowed to be in the bays, that the meeting room, the kitchen, and the bathroom is the only place that could be done."
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so, um, you know, I, I have about, I think a couple or three or four questions have come up this morning, and I probably have a list of about twenty. But, um, that's what you're gonna have when, when you're taking such drastic steps. So, we're, we're trying to go from where we were, which was not an ideal place, when we had a, um, fire chief who, uh, that certainly wasn't his main responsibility. And so, in fairness to Mr. Villa, um, we had, um, a bunch of well-run departments with some who had some real problems that needed to be taken care of. And so, that's where this all started. I'm glad that the two speakers found value, potentially, in, in what we're doing. I find great value in what we're doing. These two or three questions that we're trying to address up here are two of about twenty that, that, that I have. But I guess what I'd like, i- instead of sitting up here and trying to wordsmith and change, I guess what I'd like assurance from maybe the county manager, Mr. Groves, is that, um, you know, that some good communication could take place. We could go to the chiefs, Mr. Groves could go to the chiefs, uh, realize their legitimate concerns, and, and some of these are legitimate. You know, I think the water association, the fire department needs water. There's a real link there. And it just seems like if there were some rules and the local fire chief thought it was a good idea, there could be an avenue for that. I would hope that that, some, a lot of these issues can, and I think I've got the assurance that I need, that these issues can be taken care of with policy, rather than with wordsmithing the ordinance. There may need to be some changes in the ordinance to, to do that. I don't have a problem with supervisor, manager, I don't think. I think it's just kind of the, the same thing. It's, it's a clarification if it makes somebody feel better. But, um, and, so if I could get some, maybe some comment, or if we could have some comment from Mr. Groves to see how he thinks this is, would that be advisable, Mr. Chair?
You know, I, I, I mean, to me, sometimes I look at an ordinance and I know people, sometimes people will disagree. Sometimes when you put an ordinance, you can't cover everything. But when something happens, part of your investigation or part of what you're doing has to be looked at a failure, you know, policy, ordinance failure, where it can be adjusted. It's a working document, you know, because it, we look at, we look at certain things here. Certain things aren't gonna match, and they're gonna change. I agree with you. This is always gonna be a working document. Any policy that we have is gonna be a working document. It, it's sort of like the first meeting we had, and I hate to bring it up, you know, talking about drug, drug testing, talking about that and having that. So, then, we had to go in here and put immunity from liability and defense against claims to make sure that these fire departments, you know, understand what the law says and it's put in there. But at the end of the day, if you fail a drug test, somebody gets hurt next to you or something, it doesn't, you, you know, it doesn't immune you from being sued. And, and that's sort of baffling to me, is we had one argument about the liability, but then yet we had, you know, about the drug testing and not being able to recruit. So, I think that these, to me, these ordinances and these policies are just always a work in progress. Are we gonna sit, we can make these changes now. In a month or so, there could be public input. Are we gonna change it again? So, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm open to whatever you guys want. You guys wanna change a word, I'm open to tabling it, whatever you want. But at the end of the day, not everybody's gonna be happy with whatever we come up with.
And that's why I, I think it's useless to table it. I think we need to go ahead with something, for sure. And I think it could be a living document when, as Mr. Groves and the chiefs identify, and I just see them working together in a partnership and there being a communication that just hasn't existed previously. And maybe I'm living in some sort of fantasy world, but I think that's the idea of having a full-time fire chief. You're not gonna have to come here anymore and try to get someone who's doing two or three jobs. Uh, you've got a full-time fire chief. I think he, with his experience, I think he's gonna listen to, uh, the problems and, and have some common sense, realistic solutions. That's my hope. If it's not, then this whole thing's been, uh, this whole move is not going in the direction we want, that's for sure. I, I'd just like some, some assurance that we can, that this can be somewhat, as the chair described, a, a living document. We can't just change it every month, but as legitimate concerns are addressed, are brought up, that we could address those, and either by policy or clarification. I think a lot of the questions I have are just the, just a simple answer from the fire chief. Probably wouldn't even have to go to the county manager, 'cause they're just common sense. Yes, no, well, you can do that, but you can't do this, type of thing. And, um, and then some of them might need to be written in policy, but for us to sit up on this level and, and wordsmith everything, I think we're getting into some real gray area. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for discussion?
So, I was just gonna say that, uh, I don't think making two language changes, the two language changes that we're talking about is wordsmithing the whole document. I actually think that, um, this is a very well-thought-out document, and I deeply appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I would feel much more comfortable with this if we made the language substitutions that Mr. Brown has suggested. And I think it does clarify exactly what Mr. Billings is saying, is that, you know, we have a fire chief and we are asking for a collaborative partnership with the fire, uh, with the department chiefs. And that's exactly what we're trying to accomplish. We also, I think, um, have, as a VFD, we have a partnership with the community that is defined by the fact that it may be the only public building in the community. And, you know, there are needs in the community to, for access to a public building.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I sat here and picked Article seven apart, and I believe the way that it's written and, um, working with the fire chiefs and working with our, um, Chief Groves, I believe that we can accomplish exactly what is happening in these departments with the language that's in there, um, from a management perspective. I don't believe that that needs to be rewritten. I've picked it apart in my mind and picked it apart, um, from an enforcement standard, which is, or enforcement perspective, which is my job. I believe that we can accomplish exactly what these departments are doing and the organizations that are utilizing it with exactly the way that that article is written. I don't think it's necessary to change that. And, um, I'm not sure it's necessary managing, supervising. To me, if you're managing, you're supervising, and vice versa. I'm not necessarily inclined to change that either, but I believe Article seven will work as it's written.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, county manager, thanks for looking at this language and thinking about it. Uh, I wonder if you could clarify for me how a, let's just take the PA Water Association, 'cause I'm more familiar with it, how that could be described as for the sole benefit of the fire department?
Well, you all mentioned getting in the gray area, and I tend to get in the gray area a lot as we try to make sure that these things work for the benefit of all. I, I think water's directly, um, beneficial to a fire department.
But it's not the sole benefit. There are many, many users who live in houses that have nothing to do with the fire department who are benefiting from that association's work.
Well, maybe a better example would be the M Val, uh, example. So, Memers Valley Health Action League-
All sorts of examples.
Who does, uh, blood pressure checks and stuff like that at the fire station.
The phrase "sole benefit" is pretty constrictive.
Was your recommendation to take out the word "sole"?
No, it was to leave it in, but to apply it only to fundraising, 'cause I don't want county buildings used to raise funds for organizations outside of our purview. So, I think sole benefit does belong there for fundraising activities.
Say again what you're proposing?
I'm proposing that we, uh, instead of "so long as such meetings and events are for the sole benefit", we say, "so long as any fundraising events are for the sole benefit". That leaves the other meetings-
It doesn't say either way.
They can, they can be for the benefit of everybody in the public, or they can be benefit of the fire department. They still have to meet the manager's approval.
Well, Mr. Chair, I want this to pass today, so, um, we have to make a few changes. I'm, I'm open to doing that. I can see Mr. Brown's comment about sole benefit. That's really restrictive on the use of the building. And I don't have a problem with supervisor, manager either, 'cause I've, kind of really the same thing. I really think it's a, a decision that'll be made outside of this ordinance, um, so.
I agree with that one.
May I have one more question?
Yes.
From, um, perspective of your staff that are responsible for making sure that this ordinance works, if you're going to, if you're going to amend Article seven, I would ask that you remove the word "sole" and leave the rest of the article intact.
Remove what word?
Sole.
Okay.
Where the events are for, and it would read, "And events are for the benefit of the individual fire department", and remove the word "sole", and leave the rest of the article intact.
So, it could say, "So long as such meetings and events benefit the individual fire department", that would be acceptable wording? That works for me?
I like that.
Say it again? Sorry, I was looking up the difference between-
So long as such meetings and events benefit the individual fire department. So it's no longer solely, but they have to have some benefit to the fire department. And there I agree, a, a water association has some benefit to the fire department.
And so we're gonna stretch it to believe that MVAL doing blood pressure checks has benefit to the fire department because everybody's healthy?
And the fire department has to make fewer trips to their houses when they have problems. I think the county manager can stretch that.
I can agree with that, yeah, I can, I can go along with that.
Okay, so if I understand, if we take out soul, we're good?
Well. Take out are for the soul.
Right, so.
Take out those four short words.
So as long as meetings and events.
Benefit.
Benefit.
The individual.
The individual.
Take out of also.
You guys good with that?
Yeah, that works.
Any further discussion?
And we're in agreement to change supervisors?
Manage to supervise in Article four?
Why not just? Why not just do a slash, managers and supervisors or supervisors and managers? I mean, it, it says that it will be accomplished in collaborative partnership with the department chiefs.
Right. You know, to me, management supervision and it's, they need to work together no matter what, so. I, I don't even, I'm not even looking at that, but whatever you guys want.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm about to amend my motion, so I need to know if you guys wanna change that or not, I, I would be in favor of it, but it certainly is not a big deal for me.
If it's not a big deal, I'd just like to leave it.
Makes me too.
Yeah.
Sole benefit of, yeah, I can, whatever that wording, I'm good with.
And I'd like to amend my motion to approve this ordinance with changes to Article seven. Uh, so that the new Article seven reads that such events benefit the fire department.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, I have a second by Commissioner Billy, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate one more time that this isn't perfect, but I've received assurance. Um, through a couple of discussions that I have that, um, questions can be answered. That haven't been and, um. Problems can be addressed, this isn't the end-all and it, it doesn't need to be. In my opinion, an alarm for volunteer firefighters to say, I'm not protected, I think, I think that language is, is. Uh, in Article seventeen, appreciate that language being put in there. I know that none of us are ever protected completely for anything, we live in a society that has a court system and we could get sued. At any time, but I, I do appreciate that language and I, I think that this is a living document, appreciate the chair bringing that up and. And I think there's some reasonable, uh, people, I'm really glad to have Chief Groves and his experience. In here and to know that he's solely dedicated to this and not four or five different jobs. So, um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Billings, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you, Commissioner Billings for reminding me that I wanted to make a comment about that issue. Uh, because we had public input at our last meeting, someone who was concerned this would impact recruitment negatively. I was focused very carefully on, uh, the statement that that person was concerned about where it says. Each member shall be held accountable and responsible for their individual actions. That's the world I wanna live in, I wanna live in a world where everybody's responsible for their individual actions and held accountable for that. And the more I thought about it, the more I realized, not only doesn't this bother me, but I fully support this and. I want volunteers in our VFD who recognize that this is important, that I personally am held accountable for everything I do in my job. And I'm happy that I'm held accountable for it, so, uh, so thank you, I just wanted to address that specific comment that we received. Um, and I'm, yeah, happy that we have that in here.
Well, and I think the follow-up to that is, is that it's, it's very clear that volunteer, uh, firefighters are not. On their own, if something bad happens.
Right.
There's plenty of, uh. Law and coverage and definitions about how that is to be true. And so having this statement in there does not negate any of the things that are in place to protect someone. Uh, in the event of. A bad thing happen, and if they're liable, if they are liable for it, then it's appropriate that they are found liable for it. If they are not, then they are protected within the law, the same as anyone else's. I think it's incumbent upon Chief Groves and, and the chiefs of the individual fire departments to make sure that their. Potential recruits and current volunteers understand that very clearly.
That's it for me.
We good? Commissioner Billings, you good?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Um, Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Chairman Fonsor, Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Billings?
Yes.
Chairman Fonsor?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, moving on to, uh, next item, it's gonna be a public input during this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period, speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on, on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office, do we have anyone for public speaking? Okay, do we have anyone for public speaking? Okay, seeing none, let's move on, moving on to. Next item's gonna be budget hearing for FY twenty-five, be from an elected official and department heads. Um. And this is for departments, we're gonna start off with, uh, Maintenance Department, uh, Mr. Lockett, Public Works Department.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have the, uh, maintenance budget preliminary report for you. Like to go over a few things, um, it's relatively a flat budget. Um, increases for this year, uh, mileage and per diem. Um, we asked for a fifteen hundred dollar increase for training opportunities for current and new staff. Um, also our, uh, non-capital equipment, um, we wanted to increase that a little bit to replace some aging power tools. Our construction rehab account stays flat, it's a continuation of the in-house remodel projects that we've currently done and are continuing to do. Under maintenance contracts, we're increasing that one by eleven thousand for jail generator and facilities weed spraying that we do. Um, under the capital outlay requests, a breakdown on that, um, for a portable welder fifteen thousand. Facilities truck fifty-four, um, UTV side-by-side for grounds use. Um, the floor scrubbing machines, shower stall repainting, um, the jail and lock maintenance at the jail. That might come out to a hundred and fifty-four thousand. That is really it for the maintenance department, I stand for any questions for that one?
Commissioner Brown?
I'm gonna have this question for each of the presenters, um, we, we have the final FY twenty-four budget. Showed on this worksheet. It's more meaningful to me to compare to what we're actually gonna spend this year than to what we budgeted, because those aren't always the same. I wonder if you can give us a sense of whether we're gonna come in right around that budget?
So relatively speaking, this budget is pretty flat, and so, so what we've increased is just things for the final fiscal year that we're projecting.
Yeah, I, I might not have phrased that very clearly.
Okay.
In our current fiscal year, FY twenty-four, not twenty-five.
Good.
Do you project that your actual expenditures will be close to what these projected, what the budget expenditure?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brown, yes, we are projecting, that's, when I went through these and I looked at that, we are. Projecting that we are gonna use that money.
Thank you, Jason, thank you very much, that's all I have.
Go ahead, cause I'm still thinking.
Can you explain to me what, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar UTV looks like?
So, twenty-five, that's, it's really, really, really relatively a basic UTV. We would be using that, um, it's what they call a side-by-side, um, so if you see those running around town and people are, they're popular now. Um, it would have a four-wheel drive and it has a longer bed on it, the one I looked at was a Can-Am and, um. Like you said, it was a very, a really basic model for us to help do maintenance and things like that and driving fields and. Working events and things like we do with that for picking up trash, um, instead of taking a full-size vehicle around, um. You can be more precise with something that's that small when you're trying to do intricate things on fields and stuff like that.
But you still have to haul it.
Still have to haul it, you are correct.
So your truck is going wherever your UTV is going.
Yes, and so at our bigger park, like Baton Park for example, cliff, fairgrounds, you know, the baseball field now that we have. South of the fairgrounds, um, it makes you more efficient to be able to go around and get things done. And also for safety when events are happening, instead of taking a full-size vehicle inside there when people are around, it's nice to have something that's more compact.
Thanks.
You know, I look at this stuff, you know, and I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but. When I see a department or somebody that's really responsible with their budget, kind of on their work. Done what they're supposed to be doing, not behind on things, and they save money. You know, I don't know, looking at this, um, what's gonna be left over. At the end of some of these department budgets, and if there's extra money, but sometimes I, I look at the approach of. You know, if they have money left over, instead of putting it back in the general fund, can that money be used? Since it's budgeted for some of the items like the, the maintenance department would want? If there's left over to cut down on our next year's budget, is, am I making sense? And, and you know, I, I haven't, I haven't looked at this budget, but I mean, I sort of look at, and I'm gonna just use, uh. Jason is an example, if he saved ten thousand dollars in his budget or five thousand dollars, can it be used to offset some of this? Because, I mean, I like the departments to.
They should spend their whole.
You know, that, they're being, they're being responsible, you know, I don't like to see departments who are behind on this. And they're asking for more money, but you know, on something like this, I'd like to see, instead of that money disappearing, cause we're starting again in July first. How, can you answer that for me?
I can try, um, that, in a sense, that's pretty much what we do now, um, is if. For instance, if, I'll use your construction rehab as an example. If we were unable to get to some of those projects, then, um, yes, we would want to roll that money over until the next. So, I mean, in a sense, we do that now, um, I can't describe it exactly like you did, but. For all intents and purposes, other than like salaries and benefits and things like that, um. It, it. Everybody has their sliver of pie and yes, it goes back in there, but then we reallocate that back to the same slice of pie, if that makes any sense. So in a sense, we accomplish exactly what you described, that's sort of our. Our logic and the way that we manage these budgets from here.
Good.
That's a good point, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Jason? No? Okay, thank you, Jason.
Yeah, I will also be presenting the road department and the shooting range as well. So under the road department, we have some increases along with some, uh. A large capital outlay request of some equipment that's gonna need to be replaced. When you look it over, the telephone office supplies, um, those have increased to match the twenty-four projection. Um, which, we've added services, you know, internet, things like that, so that type of thing is gonna increase. Um, go to utilities, our twenty-four projection for that, you know, we have matched that for what we think that we were going to use. Um, the operating expense, um, increased by fifteen thousand, um, now that is an increase. In order to match up our twenty-four projection, because this year we've used so much money and it's just something that we're gonna need to. Keep doing good business going forward, um, trying to catch up on certain projects, things that we do. Under the, uh, the capital outlay, obviously you can see the vehicles that we're needing, um, and also, you know, the equipment for the road department. So, haven't had a lot of new things down at the road department and trying to get that department up to where we can do things. Instead of leasing stuff, we can have our own equipment, um, it's just the aging of these things, you cannot. Get parts and supplies for some of this stuff, it's so old, and then when frames and axles have cracks in them, it's just. It doesn't make sense to put money into things like that that you cannot, I mean, it's, you're never gonna get your money out of it after you do that, cause it's so old. From the age of the equipment, so I can read this whole list, or do you want to just ask questions? I don't know how you wanna streamline that process.
You know, one thing that I do see from our road department is how thin they're stretched. We have six hundred and some miles of, of road that needs to be covered, you know, I don't know how many equipment operators we have. I don't know what type of equipment, I know we ordered new blades and stuff not too long ago, but. You know, I understand a little bit too on, on some of this capital purchases and, and I would love for them to have all those. But I'd also like to see them get some more help, just because of. The amount of work that they have, and I, I understand what you guys are trying to do. I think we have a very good road department, but I also think that we're pretty lean there. So, I mean, I don't know if the county manager, you wanna look at stuff like that also? Because, I mean, getting equipment's fine, but when you're stretched so thin, that also hurts them around and that also hurts your employees, so. That's my two cents on that.
Mr. Chairman, I can, uh, indulge in that a little bit, we are looking at reassessing things there for the road department. Trying to figure out how many projects that we do internally and trying to slow some of those down and getting back to actual road maintenance. And so, that does help with, um, with people that I've visited with and things around the road department. So kind of in the infancy stages of getting a grasp on all of what's happening there, but I can tell you this, that, um, we're gonna make some very good changes and. Trying to get back to the road maintenance is, I think, a core thing that we're gonna try to do, instead of trying to focus on so many internal projects. And that's going forward, so.
That's fine, and that's just my two cents, I'll leave that up to you and the county manager, but, you know, I do notice that, because as commissioners. That's one of the biggest concerns we have, is the roads and, and they're not getting bladed or potholes or. Chip seals, a lot of things like that, and, and seeing the manpower in that department for the work that's put out, that, that. You know, that, that does bother me a little bit, so, but I'll leave that between you guys to do that, that's just my two cents. Commissioners, do you have anything? Commissioner Brown?
I also have two cents.
Now we're up to four.
Up to four cents, Jason. Uh, mine is a pitch again to consider electric vehicles for some of these fleet vehicles. The, um, our governor has announced that state agencies will go a hundred percent electric by twenty thirty-five. I think they've done the homework to see how much savings that represents, this is a fiscal responsibility issue in my mind. Uh, the maintenance on these vehicles is incredibly low. Uh, the savings over the life of the vehicle and not even from electricity versus gas, the savings from maintenance. Very large, so I would like to urge you to consider that. That's my two cents, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know, one thing that I just looked at too is your training budget. Five thousand dollar increase, doesn't, that seems a little low to me, but I, I don't know what you have planned, but.
Yeah, so a lot, uh, Mr. Chairman, a lot of the training that we've done with flagging, things like that, um. We, we've implemented that and trying to get that training done as well, so, also the DOT standards of. Of when, some of the classes are free that we can attend, that the state puts on, but some of the stuff we have to pay for, and so. We did that increase of five thousand dollars to seventy-five hundred, and so. That's just something we're gonna put out there for initially to see, um, with what the plans are to keep going forward and making sure that. with what the plans are to keep going forward and making sure that, um, there's training available to these guys when they can go get it and receive it.
Thank you, Commissioners. Anything else? Give Commissioner Edwards a little bit, just thank you.
I'm thinking. Uh, no, I'm good, thanks.
Uh, I could add too on there, you know, s- some of the things that the equipment that we use would also help with the road maintenance. Um, like having our own water truck, things like that, it helps when you're turning the material on the roads to help compact that, make sure that those roads stay longer, so it helps us with, um, less maintenance at the time and roads staying more intact. But it's also a game too of the weather, how the weather treats us. Um, we can go in one week and it can rain, wash things out, or just get muddy enough, or it could pretty much destroy what we've already done. And so, weather has hit us kind of hard this year in the road department as far as getting those things done, and so we're just playing catch-up now at this point, and so, when we're doing that, trying to knock out some, you know, small projects that we have going on, um, trying to get those things completed, and so, it is, it's always, it's, it's always a battle, and so it's a fine line of trying to become efficient.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards.
So, recognizing that you've been thinking about the road department for about five minutes. We appreciate how much time and effort you've put into that thought process. Um, and you mentioned, you know, getting back to the basics of road maintenance, but then you talked a little bit about how the weather affects that. You know, I've now talked to you and other road department people enough over the years to really understand how weather affects that. We also know that it's very difficult to increase road department budgets without things like capital outlay or, you know, um, other forms of, of, um, revenue other than county-generated revenue. So what are your thoughts on, uh, increasing that efficiency? Uh, how are we going to get back to more road maintenance rather than, you know, as you said, internal projects? Can you just give us an overview of what you're thinking at this point?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Edwards, I would, uh, I refer that to county manager to kinda, I, you know, I don't wanna just come out and say something that I shouldn't in a public meeting, so.
She probably really appreciates that.
Um, so, Commissioner Edwards, um, Chairman, members of the board, Jason and I are taking this opportunity, um, to really take a deep dive into the operations of the road department. Um, changing, um, the way that we look at things, um. When he talks about getting back to the basics of road maintenance, that's, that's our job, right? Um, all of these extra projects that we throw on the staff, um, the extra projects that we do for other municipalities that take away from our day-to-day responsibilities, those are the things that we're looking at. Um, we're looking at providing them with more efficient tools to be able to do their jobs better. Um, and first and foremost, if we have infrastructure, we need to take care of it, we don't need to be adding to that and causing, um, more, um, unnecessary work. Um, we need to get back to, um, providing better training, getting them to become more efficient, um, and that, I mean, we look at that from all different aspects. Um, so there's a whole lot of things that, um, Jason and I are bouncing off of each other. Um, Jason's learned a lot in a very short amount of time. Um, I, I think we have some really good ideas, um, not ready to discuss what all of those look like. Um, we probably are gonna be coming back to you to look at this budget again in the future as we sort through these things, but, um, our primary objective is to take care of, um, these men and women that work down there. Um, give them the tools that they need, acknowledge them for their hard work, and let's make their lives a little bit easier. Um, they've been forgotten for far too long, and this is our first step to try to put that department back together.
Thank you for those comments.
We good? Okay, Jason, we're done with that part.
Okay. The last one I have is the shooting range, pretty simple. We did an increase of, uh, twenty-five hundred to five thousand. Just due to the age of the facilities and things costing more, um, the shooting range gets used, um, there's, you know, like we said last year, there was almost six thousand five hundred people that went through and, and used the shooting range. And so, it's just keeping up with targets, um, berms, dirt, things that we have to do out there. Um, painting, making sure the skeet machines are good, and so, just a lot of maintenance that goes on out there, and so, to be able to help equip Kurt with the tools that he needs and to make him more efficient, just like we're trying to do with the road department, so. That was the increase that we were asking for, for shooting range.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Okay, so it's not for you, Jason, it's, I think, I think for Linda, um. It looks pretty obvious we'll need to transfer in again to zero out the shooting range. It, but you didn't put that in there, is, is this your, the way you do it?
Yeah, this, that is correct right now, this is, I'm getting all the expenses and once I know what, um, is gonna be approved as far as this budget, then I will be able to determine what transfers need to take place.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any specifics for Jason, I guess, on this one.
Good. Are we going with that one? Thank you, Jason.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your considerations.
Moving on to, uh, the next one, uh, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, my budget for the clerk's office is pretty much, um, staying flat. The only changes that are, um, being made is, uh, pretty much based on the year-to-date expenses. Um, if there's any questions, um, the changes, just, uh, to answer your question, Commissioner Brown, they're just, stuff has increased, um, we do have a little, you know, e- extra duties that we've taken on, um. We do do elections, um, every year now, um, it's just pretty much, um, the mileage per diem, we did request an increase, um, we've got a couple more trainings, um, added on to our schedule, stuff like that. But other than that, um, it's pretty flat, so I stand for questions.
Do you think the current year is gonna come in close to the budget? Because it looks like it would come in at like three eighty instead of four hundred.
Um, it, I, I think, um, it's pretty, it, it should be coming in for what's been projected at this point.
Thanks, Marissa.
You're welcome.
Is that it, Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, um, Chairman, Commissioners, uh, for my Bureau of Elections. Um, it's also pretty much staying flat with the exception of, um, the biggest increase that I am requesting is a salary increase for my Bureau of Elections. Um, I did have all the description on there, but there was a little glitch in the program, so I handed those out earlier to kind of explain, um, what that position is, um, pretty much responsible for. Um, in preparing for, I think we all know that I'm retiring here, uh, pretty soon, is, um, I've been putting a lot of thought into the important essentials of the office, and this position is essential to the clerk's office. Um, not only to the clerk's office, but to the county, um, it's responsible for the running of elections and overseeing, um, all election and election process. Uh, with me leaving, it does, um, it is going to put extra burden on that position. So that is the reason in that I am asking for that increase, um, and the increase I am requesting is to, uh, bring it to the maximum of what we have on our, uh, salary scale now. So I do stand for any questions.
This is a bit of a non sequitur, but it seems like everybody's telephone expenses are going up. Why is that? Is that because...
So the telephone expenses, I think, would be for Ms. Vazquez. Um, there is, I think, we've quite, we've often questioned, yeah.
Costing more, that much more, that every department is taking on some of that cost? Is that where that's coming from?
I believe that's what it is, it's just a rise in cost for, um, the telephone services and then not to mention additional, um, IT stuff that has been revamped and things of that nature.
Anything else, Commissioner?
You're talking about this essential question.
Yes, and that, and that is just to kind of give you guys an idea of what that position does and what actually it's the responsibility. Um, that position, again, I want to stress, is essential for the clerk's office, but also for the county as they are responsible for helping, uh, do the elections when you guys, you know, oversee some of that too, so. Uh, Mr. Heo is, um, actually worked, uh, you know, many years with us, and I feel really comfortable with me leaving, you know, that, um, she's obviously going to do a great job and continue to, um, provide great service for the elections, transparency, um, accuracy. Um, but, again, with me leaving, that is going to leave her with quite a bit of, um, you know, extra stress to go along with that.
Also, a small question, just to help us understand.
Sure.
I understand, uh, most of these benefits going up with the full-time salaries going up instead of part-time. Uh, but I don't understand if the group insurance jumped, but the other departments have been much smaller than this.
So there hasn't been any change in my, um, employees or any group insurance, so that may be a question for...
Also, Ms. Vazquez's question.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause we haven't had any changes, we haven't had any, um, added, any, any, uh, new, you know, dependents or anything like that, so there's, there's been zero changes, so I'm not sure why there's been an increase.
Um, Mr. Brown and members of the board, um, what's been calculated into the group insurance is gonna be an increase, um, for all individual employees. So we're anticipating of at least a five percent increase in group insurance as we do almost every year.
Yeah, I guess I was just curious, because that's something I usually look at, because sometimes it goes up a lot.
Yeah.
And I've been really pleased with the road and maintenance. Uh, departments didn't go up much at all, but this one is.
Um...
So I was just curious about that.
It should be just a five percent increase, but we'll take a look at it again, um, and make sure that the benefit piece is in there for the insurance.
Cool.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Edwards?
We can invite a longer mic for the rest.
Is that it, Commissioners, for Clerk?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Clerk.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next one is our, our assessor, Mr. Tito.
For, um, in the assessor's office, you're gonna see there's three light items that are, have been requested. If I could go straight to the four ninety-nine, the maintenance and repairs, we do not need that anymore. That, I've already spoke with Linda, and that was a mistake on our end, so we need to eliminate that. On the other four ninety-nine, the temporary salaries, this is a position for the GIS deeds individual. Um, we had to rehire an individual back into our office to update and maintain the, the files at our office as a temp position, only nine months.
It's in the reappraisal.
With this position, I worked with Charlene and also the deputy county manager, and I wanna thank them both for helping assist in this and getting a, a employee into our office to help us with this. The, again, like I said, it's only nine months. In the meantime, right now, we are training a new employee, getting him on board on the deeds, updating, getting everything correct in our system. So the four ninety-nine, it is at twenty-six thousand, but yes, it is a temporary position only. The other request is the four oh one on the office supplies, and it's just an additional three hundred dollars due to the inflation. And that's all that we have, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, uh, next one is our treasurer, Mr. Kong.
Good morning, Chairman Funtson, Commissioners. Um, before is my budget justification, um, for the next fiscal year for the treasurer's office. Um, under office supplies, I'm in requesting additional fifteen hundred, um, five hundred for increase of rates of, of costs of, of supplies. And, uh, additional thousand for pitching for the pallet of paper. Um, under equipment, maintenance and repair, I'm asking for additional five hundred dollars. Um, and this is to, um, include for our cash machine, um, annual maintenance that will need to be performed on the machine. Um, under membership dues, the NMC Treasurers affiliate increased dues from twenty-five to a hundred dollars, um, annually. Um, under non-capital equipment, I'm asking for an increase of four thousand dollars to purchase new Epson receipt printers. Um, and this would be to replace the front-end stations of the, of our, um, front end of the treasurer's office. Um, the current equipment that we have, um, they were purchased from Treasurer Sadio when he was in office, and they are starting to, um, just showing sign of depreciation and, and starting to slow down a little bit. Um, we do widely use these to receipt any property tax or any other receipts, um, for other departments that are needing receipts. So these are a big, um, a must in the treasurer's office. Uh, maintenance contracts, it says a thousand, but I don't know if that was my end or, I don't know. But it's, it should be one thousand seven fifty. Um, that's gonna be the increase of the annual recurring e-commerce bridge pay service of one thousand two fifty that we will need to pay Tyler Technologies. Um, and then a five hundred dollar increase for a contract for the, uh, copier with PTS and the Wells Fargo lease. Um, I also included in my budget, uh, for the senior account positions, the full-time salaries, um, from where they're at now to twenty-two dollars per hour for a cost of living, and, uh, this would increase both positions to in between minimum and maximum. I stand for any questions regarding the treasurer's office.
So this is another one where the group insurance went up a lot more.
But only half the rate of the clerks.
Right.
For some reason.
For sure.
So, Mr. Chair.
Percentage is more than five percent.
Uh, ju- just to clarify, some of the items identified as increases in, in your presentation, those lines are, are either going down or not increasing as much, so I'm, I'm guessing perhaps they're increases compared to what's actually being spent this year, not increases compared to what was budgeted for this year.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brown?
Absol- correct.
That, that's...
Yeah, they're, they're gonna be new expenses for the next fiscal year.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Good, Commissioner Brown?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I also have for solid waste.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm gonna be looking at increasing office supplies, um, to twenty-five hundred, just for the rise of cost and, um, in supplies. Um, postage with the rate increase, I'm looking at a nine thousand dollar increase, um, and that's gonna be for our, um, United States Postal Service on our permit, to submit, submitting bills and et cetera. And then non-capital equipment, I'm also looking at getting, um, changing out the Epson printers, purchasing one new for the new station and, and one for the, for the regular state... purchasing one new for the new station and, and one for the, for the regular station that solid waste currently works at. Yes, I will Linda, you're welcome.
Do we have anything Commissioners?
No.
Thank you. Moving on to our Sheriff.
Thank you Mr. Chairman Commissioners. As, on my, on my budget, I have two, actually two items that I wanted to discuss. The first one is, the budget that I currently have, and as far as overtime, has been expended with three months left in the fiscal year. Unfortunately, law enforcement overtime cannot be predicted as we deal with so many unpredictable events. In fiscal year twenty twenty-four, we have experienced major crimes which require a lot of time and hours in overtime to investigate. This has caused our overtime to get spent rather quickly. Uh, we still have two holidays coming up that we will need to pay as overtime due to us having a twenty-four hour coverage. Therefore, I'm asking my budget to be increased by forty thousand. Um, I don't know if you have access to my budget, but we are currently already overspent on that budget, approximately forty thousand, and, um, that's something that I try to control. But like I say, with all the unpredictable events that we, that we get, it's, it's hard. Uh, we've, we, in fiscal year twenty-four, we had several homicides, and those homicides take a lot of, a lot of, um, time to properly investigate, so I'm just asking for an increase. What also has caused our increases is that we have been shorthanded for the last, since I took over in twenty twenty-three. We, we were quite a bit shorthanded and that caused overtime and having shift coverage, being that we do cover twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I am very hopeful, uh, we are currently almost fully staffed. I'm proud to say that we're almost fully staffed to where that is gonna help us not having to worry about paying extra. Um, so hopefully that, that'll, I can't give you an exact of how much I think it's gonna save with being fully staffed for the next fiscal year, but, you know, I did wanna report that. The other item that I did wanna bring up is our, under capital outlay is, you know, since I took over in twenty twenty-three, uh, we have purchased several units, from new units to, for our law enforcement, but all of that has been done through, through grant funding. Um, I don't know since when I retired in twenty eighteen, uh, if the county had ever purchased any units, but within the last two years, the county has not purchased us any unit out of the county budget. So therefore, I'm asking for a little bit of help from the county to be able to purchase two fully marked patrol units. Currently, we do have several that are still high mileage and, and out of, that are not advisable to be driven, and, um, fortunately, I've been working with Mr. Corey from the Road Department, and he himself has sent us emails in regards to some units that shouldn't even be repaired because of the high mileage and the wear and tear that it already has. You know, and I'm appreciative of him looking into that for us as well and ensuring that the deputies are out there that are driving safe and well-equipped units to be able to do their job and do a good job for the community. So therefore, I'm asking for, you know, the hundred and fifty thousand to purchase two. Unfortunately, they're very expensive. We do try to use the, the equipment that's already in, in some of these older ones that we're replacing, so we take every opportunity to replace with old equipment, so we don't have to buy new equipment, which we were fortunate to do this last time, I used a lot of the older radios that were put in these new units, so I just feel that the deputies put a lot of miles and time out there when they're out there patrolling, they do twelve-hour shifts and, you know, they need to be able to get, be, have reliable vehicles. Unfortunately, law enforcement, we do have crashes, you know, crashes happen. There's some that, that are unavoidable, and there's some that, yeah, they, they, they make mistakes, and we deal with them, we address them. We are gonna implement a, a policy where if they crash a unit, because it's their fault and they're not paying attention, you know, there, there'll be consequences. Um, and that has been happening since I took over again, but I'm just asking for your help to be able to replace. I know for a fact we have three of them that are over two hundred and fifty thousand miles that are still on the fleet that need to be replaced, and um, I'm hoping that we're able to get that done. The other thing that I did only, that I wanted to address is under our equipment, maintenance and repair, um, I just, I want, I'm hoping to keep that budget the same as, as it is. Out of that budget, we do utilize it for obviously repairs of our units and maintenance of our units, um. You know, even though we're replacing new ones, these older ones that are, I mean, new, ones that have been bought frequently or used recently, get high, high mileage, the deputies are averaging about thirty thousand miles a year driving throughout the year, you know, on, on these units, because we have a big county that we have to cover, and I'm just, um, hoping that we can keep them safe out there and, and keep them going. Other than that, I think everything else is, as far as my budget, I'm, I'm very frugal, and I try to, to keep it as, as close to the budget as I can, and I will save wherever I can save. And that, that is our goal this year to hopefully cut down our overtime cost. But like I say, it's all unpredictable, and I just ask for your support, and hopefully we can move forward with it. I stand for any questions.
Questions Commissioners?
One, getting a little tired of I'm sure, but, uh, when I project full-time salaries through May and June, because we're given here the information through April.
Correct.
It looks like we'll end up around one point nine million, which would represent three hundred and fifty thousand in, in savings for the current budget year. I guess it would be useful to know if that's an accurate thought, because if so, I'm much less concerned about some of the increases.
So Mr. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Chairman Fonsen, Commissioner, uh, Brown, just to go over a little bit of, of that in, uh, savings there, being that we were short-staffed, that has caused savings in, in our office. Um, when I took over in twenty-three, I, we had eleven vacancies, so with those vacancies being open, that has saved a lot, the county a lot of money. And then here last year, we did apply for a grant, which was a recruitment grant. And out of that grant, we're able to hire and pay the salaries out of that, so that is also a cost savings to the county for three years. So that's where there's some savings that I'm hoping that we're able to do this one time. I mean, it's a, it's not a recurring expense to purchase the units, so with the savings that we've had within this last two years, I'm hoping that that will offset and keep our budget going in a positive direction.
So, so that sounds like a, an accurate projection.
That's correct.
To you, uh, yeah, I mean, that also helps explain overtime, right? If you have fewer folks on salary, you're gonna end up spending more on overtime.
That's correct.
So, okay, that makes a lot of sense to me. Thank you Mr. Sheriff.
Thank you.
The other Commissioners? Thank you Sheriff.
Thank you.
Moving on to fleet maintenance, Mr. White.
Good morning Chairman, Commissioners. Let's start out with the tire budget. I'm looking at overall increase to the tire budget primarily due to inflation, market availability and instability. The projected fiscal year twenty-four, I was showing one oh five, five forty is where we would wind up. The budget here is, is showing, uh, fifty-four for fiscal year twenty-four. So I'm looking at overall a hundred and six thousand. The Sheriff's Office tires, we're looking at breaking these out into separate line items the next fiscal year, so we can track each department better. A slight increase to the SO tires, um, again inflation, market conditions. That should cover two-thirds of the Sheriff's fleet at twelve hundred dollars per set. And then, uh, the Road Department tires are projected from fiscal year twenty-four actual. It's a slight increase to cover inflation and market conditions. And then I'm looking at replacing tires on half of the admin vehicles fiscal year twenty-five. It's approximately a thousand dollars per set. Moving on to the Sheriff's Office fleet maintenance and repairs, I'm just looking at a ten percent increase to account for inflation and market conditions. A lot of these newer vehicles, we require us to purchase, uh, factory parts. When you buy parts from the dealership, they usually cost quite a bit more than, uh, going aftermarket. And then, uh, road fleet maintenance, I'm looking at ten percent also. Just due to the age of the fleet, and there's a lot more, uh, maintenance needed on those older vehicles at the Road Department. Vehicle equipment maintenance, um, just a ten percent increase there as well. For a lot of the same reasons mentioned for the other two line items. And then, uh, capital outlay. Uh, this list is pretty much what's needed at the shop to provide more safe, reliable and, uh, within compliance vehicles to service the fleet. Our mechanic service truck, RD nine, it's very high mileage, it's a thirty-three-year-old fire truck. It's very hard to find parts for it now. And then the RD twenty-eight service truck, I'd like to replace it. It's high mileage, it's an older diesel truck, and it's, uh, out of DOT compliance, it's seventeen years old. And then I have a drive-on lift at fifty K. This would allow us to do a lot more of the heavy maintenance on heavier trucks, like, and Cory Camino's buses. Right now, we're kinda limited on what we can actually do with the Cory Camino's, uh, buses, just due to their size. And then, uh, I had twelve thousand in there for tools for the brake levers. When we have a vehicle come in, currently, we're, if we have a bad rotor or squeaky brakes, we can send the rotors out and have them refinished here in town, but it's about a hundred dollars per set to refinish them. If we had a, a brake lay there in the shop, we could refinish the rotors there and save quite a bit of money. And figured in eighteen months, it would pay for itself. And then, uh, there's fifty-four thousand to replace the RD six, that's a vehicle I have been driving daily. The transmission's starting to go out in it, and it'd be nice to, it'd be nice to sell most of these vehicles while they're still operational before they completely fail on us. It'd be nice to get them replaced. Just an additional ten thousand for tools and replacement tools, a drill press and a plasma cutter. I stand for any questions.
No. We, we don't have the list that you were just reading too of capital outlay items? I, I can't.
You gotta scroll real slow to see.
I went and double-checked the computer.
Yeah, I did too.
I mean, you could, you, I'm looking at page thirty-five and then page thirty-six on the computer PDF. Thirty-six is the IT department.
Would you like my copy, Chairman Brown?
Well, no, I, I expect I can be sent an electronic copy, which, no reason to take yours, thank you. But, um, I think it probably drew all of our attention because it shows zero expenditures in the previous three fiscal years, and then all of a sudden, two hundred and ninety-three thousand. So I'm guessing there's some administrative explanation for that.
Mr. Chairman, there's a few things I need to explain to you on this budget. This is part of my restructuring, and so what we've done, we've created a new fleet department that is actually functioning like a fleet department, not an offset of the Road Department. So there hasn't been any allocation for, um, capital outlay or tools specifically to this. It's just been simple things like tires, um, repairing the fleet on the Road Department vehicles. And so, um, when we do use a full-blown prelim budget, you are gonna see, um, salaries, benefits, all of that incorporated into this department, um, that will move out of the Road Department into here. But that, and like, I know the tires seems like really overwhelming, but if you knew historically we would just round up whoever, like, if the Treasurer's Office needed tires, well, then they would round up money out of their budget to buy a set of tires, or admin would. So what we're trying to do is streamline it so that we can adequately identify what our expenses are, what our needs are, if we can properly plan for fleet replacement and start keeping our employees in safer and higher, um, quality vehicles as well as better maintained. So, um, I think Corey's done an excellent job with his projections. Um, he's not asked for anything that he doesn't necessarily need, um, there's not a lot of wants. If you could see some of the tools and the equipment that these mechanics work with, then quite frankly, it's embarrassing. So, um, these are things we need to do, and, um, it's just never been addressed in the past. We've scrounged up stuff from any and every budget we could find, rather than just taking care of it like we should.
So can you, and, you know, we're sort of lost on this. You know, somewhere along this road, we have to balance vehicles. I mean, I just made a comment earlier about six hundred and some miles of, of vehicles. I'd like to know what the Road Department has, because I know that, you know, for the Sheriff's Department, we continually are replacing vehicles or buying vehicles. But I, you know, as a Commissioner, you gotta look at the other side too. How many vehicles in the Road Department need to be replaced, how many are unsafe? And do we have to shift our, our, our area and hopefully that the Sheriff's Department takes care of what they have for now to get us through, because our Road Department too, I mean, that's an essential function also. So I'd like to see how many vehicles they have, the years, mileage, and what you think needs to be replaced, or Mr. White thinks they need to, uh, need to be replaced. And then so we can take a good look at, how do we balance this?
We can do that, and he's got a good inventory. There are some that's contained in this budget, but we can, we can create you a spreadsheet of what they have and like what we're asking for and what we're asking to, um, replace. That's easy for you to do.
Yeah, I can highlight them on myself, I'll give them to you today.
And then the other part to this, the policy that we got to review and look, is it gonna take care of some of the accountability on some of the, the vehicles that aren't being serviced timely, that are being damaged, that are, is that gonna help us? And I'm assuming that's gonna be a coordination between Mr. White and your office, right?
Yes, so that was the goal of that policy, was to give, um, Corey the tools. He needs to say that this is how we're going to maintain vehicles, this is when we expect you to bring them in. And then it also gives us the, um, accountability piece, that whenever these employees decide to, you know, ignore the check engine light for ten thousand miles or not take it in for their, um, scheduled oil change, then, um, we can discipline according to that policy, because this is getting ridiculous that, you know, we, we put employees in new units or in new vehicles and nobody takes care of anything. So, um, it's, it's twofold, um, is to be able to, to accomplish the things, um, that you guys expect of us so that we can say, here's the age of our fleet, this is our plan, and Corey's able to identify that in three years we need to do this, in five years, we need to do these other things, and be able to provide you that ability to balance the budget and figure out what we need to replace and when. So, um, he's done an excellent job of laying all of that out, we just need to be able to put that in front of you.
And I know Ms. Vasquez put out, which, thank you, appreciate, you know, our timeframe is to when we're discussing budgets, but if we can have that information as to how many of the Road Department vehicles need, need to be replaced, so that can be discussed at our next budget, uh, meeting or whatever we discuss. But no, thank you. Commissioners, anything else? Commissioner Edwards?
So, um, the whole fleet thing is something we've been talking about for a really long time, so I wanna just thank you and Corey both for all your work that you've done on this. It's, it's really, uh, great to hear the progress that you've made and looking at what the future is and being able to plan around fleet, I think is super, super important, so thank you for that. Um, I'd like to know if, um, if replacing vehicles or thinking about replacing vehicles with EVs is part of your current conversation, and if not, do you plan for that? And if not, do you plan for that to be happening in the future? I'm talking about the discussion, not the actual doing of it, talking about talking about it. Because it is true that maintenance costs are significantly less. And it would theoretically cost it costs less for um gas and oil and things like that. And so when we're talking about vehicles that are, you know, on the road for things like, you know, travel and going to Santa Fe and all that kind of stuff, it makes sense in my mind. So I just wanna know what your thinking is on that.
I've got a lot of comments on that. Um, I'd like to divert my answers to Charlene for now.
Oh, great.
Make sure I'm not stepping on any of those.
You know, to me, Commissioner Edwards, I mean, I understand and and I I love this and I know Commissioner Brown's brought it up. You have brought it up, but I think what we need to do is we need to have a discussion of, you know, where do we put the charging stations or get the money for the start charging stations prior to taking that road?
Well, I just wanna know if we're talking about it.
Yeah, but I think what we really need to talk about is the charging stations. You know, we've discussed putting some at the conference center, maybe here and do that because it is a great idea and you're right. I mean, I don't think electric vehicles will work like for the sheriff's department because of the emergency type calls they have in the charging stations. But I think that we need to, we need to move, basically what I'm saying, we need to, as a commission, need to get off and figure out these charging stations and say, this is what we need and let's do it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and to answer your question, um, yes, we've had the conversation, but um there are some things that we would need to address internally as equipments, training for employees. Not everybody can work on an electric vehicle. Um, I mean, I'll use my, I'll use my stepson as example. He's an ASC Ford certified master mechanic, but if he just went to work for Tesla and he's going back through all of and it's 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 a completely different world for him. And so um there's a lot of things that we would have to put into place before we would even consider adding electric vehicles to the fleet. But yes, we are having those conversations, but that's not something you're going to see in this fiscal year budget.
Well, I didn't really expect to. But I do wanna know that part of the fleet conversation is that conversation.
There is a lot of conversation around.
But I think we need to start having that discussion on charging stations and we need to do something with them because we've talked about it for two, three years that I know of and we still haven't put one up, so. But anyway, I'm gonna skip the IT department because I just saw his figures, so. Go ahead, Mr. Vaca.
I'd like to open with, if you have any questions?
No.
Well, go ahead and cover some. So I have five uh GL accounts that uh I've requested some increases on. Four of them are relatively minor, um anywhere from five thousand under. So I think those are relatively straightforward. Uh, the one in particular, though, is my request there in capital outlay for a hundred-and-seventy thousand. And what this is in regards to is the starting the process of migrating all of our Eagle services over to the cloud. This would in course, uh this would of course involve our assessor's office, clerk's office, and treasurer's office. So that's uh essentially what you could say is my um heavy-hitting item on this request here for the preliminary budget. So aside from that, I do stand for any questions.
Is that a little question? So uh it seemed pretty obvious that the first part of that sentence was starting on the project of migrating. So a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars is not the total amount that we're gonna spend on this?
No, no, this would actually be over a three-year period. And uh the most recent quote that I received actually brought this number down considerably. So it it's gonna span this out. So this can be modified here since it's preliminary. I re- I input this number prior to getting the final quote from our Eagle representative. So the number now, looking at it for the next three years, would be a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, so.
Each year?
Correct. And that's in order to, like I was saying, begin the process of migrating over. So that will allow us to start, but the thing is, once we've started, we're, that's the route that we absolutely take. So it then comes to uh finishing off those payments over the next three years. So it would be a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand over the next three years for that migrating services.
In this budget, we are committing ourselves to a three-year, three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar project or four-hundred-and-thousand.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Nice. Question?
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, um, this probably judges good with what they have. Uh, planning department, Mr. Hernandez.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Budget relatively small increases with certain line items. Third first, uh one is our telephone increase of six hundred dollars, uh just in order to match fiscal year twenty-four projections. Uh, office supplies, I'm asking for an increase of fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, this is to cover our paper contribution, uh as well as some increased staff supply needs. Mileage per diem, fifteen hundred dollars increase uh to match fiscal year twenty-four projection. Fuel increase of fifteen hundred dollars for um my market fuel price increases. And equipment maintenance and repairs to five hundred dollars, uh just for minor vehicle maintenance needs, wipers, car washes, et cetera. Operating expense of increased four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Uh, this is for a clothing allowance for the code enforcement officer so that way we can equip her with a uniform while she's out uh in the field. And on capital equipment of nine hundred dollars, uh this next budget, I would like to buy my staff some new chairs. There's our aging and uh they've had it for a few years.
New chairs?
And other than that, I stand for any questions?
I want them standing.
Good, thanks.
Yeah. Thank you, Randy. Moving on to we have uh it's gonna be out of order, but go ahead, Ms. Rebecca. Yeah, I'm going by the list here, so.
Chairman, Commissioners, um just kind of run through the highlights here. So in fiscal year twenty-five, we're looking at an operating budget increase of four-hundred-and-forty-seven, five-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. Of that, two-hundred-and-forty thousand is for capital equipment and I'll go over theirs with you individually. Um, but the other part of it is for personnel costs. We have a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents increase. And where that comes from is that last year, we added two positions to the airport as well as created a supervisor position for the airfield supervisor. So that's where those additional costs are coming in. Um, without those two, capital and personnel, we were looking at an increase of eighteen thousand, four-hundred-and-seven dollars to our operating budget. And I'll have you remember that we also added a facility to the airport. So now that we have those extra costs for maintaining that uh facility and the utilities, we've seen other line item, you know, individual things go up and it's just inflation. Um, but to go over my request for capital equipment. All right, we're requesting an F-two-fifty pickup. Um, currently, we have a small Ford Ranger and a one-fifty. Um, we are not able to pull a trailer, do anything with that equipment. I mean, we can't go borrow a trailer and and do anything because those, they just don't pull it uh for the weight of the equipment. Um, with that two-fifty, we have a Ford Escape that has engine issues. And again, it's one of those that Cory's identified as it is not worth putting money into. Um, so that would allow us to get that vehicle out of the fleet. Um, we're requesting a dump trailer. Um, at this point, the guys run around in the pickup trucks and we're trying to we move more tumbleweeds than you can possibly imagine. Uh, we have an old uh Chevy truck that we have a snowplow on and its purpose is to help us move tumbleweeds. And so our hope is that we can be a little bit more efficient uh in doing that. As well as when we have to do airfield maintenance, the guys will borrow the uh the Bobcat. They go get a scoop of millions from down the road, they come back and they do a a hundred feet, if that, trying to fill it in. We have to maintain our edges on the runway at less than three inches, no more. Um, so it's just a constant maintenance issue and we just, we've never had equipment. I mean, this is the first capital request you've seen from the airport. That's why it goes from zero to two-hundred-and-forty, because we've just never had equipment out there. Next request would be for a skid steer. Again, right now, if we want it, we have to get Jason and his folks to get their truck and their trailer to bring us their equipment so that we can borrow it for a couple of days and then generally, they need it right back. And we don't get to finish any of our projects. We're just behind on on being able to keep up with that airfield. And then finally, request for a runway broom that will also be for snow removal. Throughout the years, we don't have any snow removal equipment. Um, if we have snow come through or ice, we basically close the airport. We get in our fire truck and our sweeper truck and run up and down the runway, back and forth until the sun comes out, hoping that it will melt and go away. Uh, last year, we had a capital project where we grooved the runway and it's greatly improved. But if we had the broom, we could actually better manage, we can prepare for snow events and get out and get ahead of it. It will also help us in cleaning up after helicopters, being able to to sweep all the, it's called FOD, Ford object debris, off of the airfield and get it back where we don't have a risk of uh making holes in aircraft. So um with that, I stand for questions.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Rebecca. Um, I wanna start with just a comment for staff. Uh, this is the third capital outlay that's, it's obvious that the sale just goes long. And so don't just send us the fleet, if you'd send us all of them, that would be awesome. Okay, thanks. Um, but you didn't mention, I don't think, unless I was spacing out, the fuel sales increase, uh which I assume is partly related to the fuel farm, the new fuel farm.
Well, yeah, it's a little bit of a market. So yes, we have an increase year over year on our fuel sales, but so much of what you'll see in revenue is if the cost to buy it goes up, my cost to sell it to them goes up. And so, you know, conversely, you know, like right now, we're having a really slow fire season, thankfully. Where we're probably gonna be, have lower fuel sales, but if I don't have to buy it, I also don't have to. So um it it really just kind of fluctuates. Year over year, though, yes, we we've increased our our fuel sales bu- volume-wise.
Well, I guess what I was looking at was the expense increases zero. And the revenue increases four-hundred thousand.
Yeah. And that's just based upon what we're seeing this year, that our our revenue is above what we had expected. So I I really think that, I can't really project what we're gonna see for the cost of purchasing fuel.
Right.
But I think that we're, we're safe with the budget that we have this year, but I also know that we're gonna be making more, so.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great to see. It certainly makes me feel better about some of the capital stuff that we we can afford it. The the hangar loan, the hangar ground lease is going down, is that, why is that?
That's because we bought that building and Scott Nichols is no longer paying us. So, yeah.
If we bought it, are aren't we leasing it to someone?
Yeah, Advanced Air, actually, they pay a rental, but that isn't a ground lease. That is purchasing space within the hangar.
It's a different, it's in the rent account instead of got it.
So uh we have several ground leases out there and basically they were just paying us for the ground underneath the buildings that they built. And since we bought that building, we no longer get that ground lease money.
And are you still contemplating increasing the number of hangers?
Yes, yes, it's actually, I've got a request into the state right now for the additional T-hangers. And then as part of my capital budget, I'm also requesting that we uh install sunshades so that we can have outside parking that's just under shades. And that's really common in in uh southern New Mexico.
My last question is about the tumbleweeds, which seems like a safety issue as well as an annoyance.
Oh, yes, it's it's incredible.
Is it a a job for for better or more fencing?
No, um, actually, I would love to have more gates that I could open and free them to the world.
To let them out.
Yes.
Oh, no, we don't like to do that. Cause I have so many tumbleweeds.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Struck me that, you know, looking at solid waste and the way they handle all the blowing stuff, got these enormous fences.
Yeah, we actually will get tent, cause our gate, our gates around on the airfield are eight feet and they will climb, but then they hang on to each other. And they get to the point where they are massively tall, yeah. And so the guys get out there with the snowplow and move.
The tumbleweed plow. It like, I think we shower you with with compliments and thanks all the time, but just last week, I was at a a hearing and a guy had flown down from Santa Fe to be at the hearing and I don't know why he had cause to communicate with you, but uh he, when he found out I was a commissioner, expressly told me, well, your airport manager is is great. Communication was excellent, so thank you again.
He actually flew in in his own plane.
Yes, exactly.
A courtesy car to get there and, you know, so there was some level of coordination where my guys had to make sure that they got the agreement signed and have the car available for him earlier in the morning, so.
He appreciated it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to detention center, Mr. Hernandez.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, the following is FY twenty-five budget for the detention center. Uh, we work really hard to be fiscally responsible. And also, as we move into year three of our five-year plan, during this administration and this administration team took over three years ago, what we did is we met with the county manager and the different departments and came up with goals and and things that the deten- detention center needed to move forward. One of the biggest goals that we came with is the accreditation program, which we are currently now in progress of going through that accreditation program. I will tell you that all accreditation facilities and facilities that are going out for accreditation do have a full-time accreditation manager at their facility, which we discussed with the county manager's office and also with the accreditation council and with the New Mexico counties. Uh, what I did see in some of the facilities that do have in the full-time accreditation manager is that accreditation manager is a civilian position to which I think could run into problems because if you do have uh uh things that aren't being hap- that aren't happening within the facility, it's hard to get those straight because as a civilian, you cannot do any discipline or move forwards. You have to report it to the warden. The warden then has to assign it to some of the staff who take care of it himself. So then moving forward with that program, I talked to the accreditation council and said it suggested that it be a security position. So moving forward with this uh budget for this twenty-twenty-five, we have three line items to represent. So what I'm asking for now is a new position of a captain's position within the facility. And that's why you see that increase of that fifty-two thousand along with the benefits. I do know that the group insurance raised significantly, which I gotta talk to Linda, but that's partly because of all the employees. Cause as you know, uh, one of the problems and issues that we do have is our recruitment and retention of employees. So also with that, with having the problem with recruitment and retention of employees comes an excessive overtime usage because as your four or five staff members short, you need other officers to fill that position because your facility does have to operate in a secure manager, manage, manage system. So you do have to have a small number of employees to operate that facility. Uh, we usually have to have four or five or six and recently, because of shortages, uh, we're operating at less than five. Another thing that I see is is the accreditation manager right now is one of the lieutenants. But with the problem with the management of staffing, I find that my lieutenants are often happening in the back or working overtime as officers because we're filling in them gaps as officers. I myself, for the first time in the three years that I took over, found myself working as an officer position for a couple hours a couple of months ago, due to some illnesses and some other issues. Uh, so that position as a captain will be the accreditation manager. And also, as we move forward in our rise program and moving forward with the rise and hopefully becoming a permanent fixture within our facility and also including that ignite program, that captain will not only be the accreditation manager, but also the programs manager. I will say that the rise program through the state and possibly the ignite program do come with reimbursements for that position while they're working on that certain pro- program. So the state does reimburse as the program manager for the rise program. They do reimburse for that program for a percentage of the day that he does work on the rise program. Another issue that we do have that was addressed in the five-year plan, but is gonna be adjustment, is our capital outlay. I'm asking for forty-eight thousand for capital outlay for new vehicles. I really appreciate the work, hard work that Cory's done in getting with the detention center, putting a preventive maintenance plan for our vehicles. However, he became aware and I did talk to the county manager that our vehicles are very old. We have two transport vehicles, one that admin uses for training for officers, for uh Santa Fe trips, for conferences. Both vehicles are two-thousand-and-ten Ford Escapes. Both vehicles are 2010 Ford Escapes. The admin vehicle has 114,000 miles on it and has some issues that Cory's addressing. And also our transport vehicle that officers use to transport inmates to the hospital or if we have emergency transports to hospitals out of town, that's also 2010 and it has 144,000 miles on it. So I did address that in the five-year plan, but kind of got educated by county manager and Cory about the plan and we adjusted it and said we probably need new vehicles. As our five-year plan back in 2022 addressed it by saying if we could cooperate with the sheriff's department and as he gets new vehicles, move down their vehicles. But as we learned today, a lot of those have a lot of wear and tear on them or are damaged. And it's better to get the new vehicle and make sure everybody's safe and safe on the road, especially when transporting detainees. The third item that I have is a quite significant increase of $10,000. And that's for our contracts for our APEC maintenance contracts. And what that is, is the maintenance contracts that take care of our camera systems, our operating systems that open the doors and our locking systems that open our sliders and then the speakers that we could talk to the inmates through master control to communicate with them also. I guess with the cost of everything, the technicians and learning and all, um, working with maintenance, we're trying to train maintenance on the locks. That's why that lock request for is increasing his budget. But that's a quite significant increase. But preventive maintenance and all those equipments in the detention center is very vital because it helps the equipment last longer rather than having to replace new equipment for probably triple or quadruple the price. I think the biggest thing that we really wanted to look at moving forward for that captain's position is getting accredited and staying accredited. Accreditation is a very daunting task, but you have to not only upload your files of proof of practices of over 190 standards, but the hard part is when the accreditation team does your audit, they randomly pick files or randomly pick things to see what you're doing. And if you're not doing them correctly, you won't pass that accreditation. So not only does the captain have to be the accreditation manager to get those files of compliance, he has to make sure we have quality control checks that every one of the 190 standards are meant daily. Uh, this first accreditation process, you have to provide proof of practice for one year. If you could provide that proof of practice for one year, you do, do get a credit for a three-year period. However, once your three-year period is over, for your next accreditation cycle, your audit has to provide proof of practices for three years. So basically, with our first accreditation process, we need to get it where it's a daily task, done every day, rather than accreditation cycle. Because what I experienced when I was at the prison, when we did our three-year accreditation cycle, that we were running around for two or three weeks, working 16-hour shifts, trying to find files back from three years ago because we did not do it daily like we should have. So that's one important moving forward and keeping the facility accredited is getting that accreditation and keeping that accreditation to where that captain is in charge of the accreditation manager and issuing directives and orders to the two lieutenants and moving forward and keeping the files neat and in progress to keep that accreditation from now on. I'm hoping for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This next one I have on the, here on the slide is Commissioners. Are you going to do that one, Sharon?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The items that you'll see, the increases, uh, most of them are to match up to, um, current projections. One that I would point out, you will see an increase in agriculture agent office. This is for, um, the extension office. And, um, the budget increase is due to, um, I'll just read you Tom's email. It says the budget increase is due to the legislature appropriating a 3% increase this year, followed by a fringe benefit increase of 2.75%. So this is, um, the way that the extension office works. It's, um, it's a three-way split, county funding, state funding, federal funding. And so this will be the portion of the increase to cover, um, to cover those salary and benefit increases. And ours, um, is broke down in that way. It's a little less in some of the other counties because we are a two-agent county. So we only have Jessica and Lauren. And then they have, um, clerical staff. So that's what that increase is for. The audit increase, um, that's just to match up to our current contract. And we don't see audit fees decreasing in the future. I did add, um, I did add an additional 20K to your community support line item. I know this was something you created a couple of years back to, um, support various, um, community activities. I'm finding that, um, we're getting a lot of requests. And I continually tell people, no, I'm sorry, we can't help you do that. And I think they're often very beneficial, um, that I wished we would be able to support. So I, I did add an additional 20K to that. Hope you would consider, um, doing that. So that's pretty much the rest of yours, these three flat. Any questions?
Do we get a say-so in our budget?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Say-so? It's just thrown here and here you go. Go ahead, Commissioner.
It would be helpful for me to have a list of.
Uh, what you were able to say yes to from the community support. And maybe even better, because sometimes I'm out and about and people mention this to me, you know, a real time thing, hey, I've just given 10,000 to the Blues Festival or whatever it is. Uh, that, that would be helpful so I don't feel stupid.
Like, so for example, where you support, um, the Little League sports teams, we do a lot around that. Um, for example, there's, um, a young lady that's doing, uh, community-based, um, yoga that is, um, trauma, around trauma. That's very beneficial to what we do with our rise program. You know, the city's able to contribute and so they look to us for a lot to be able to match some of what the city does and.
So I know that young lady, but I didn't know the county supported her, so that's.
Well, I, she's one that I had to say no to. Because I didn't have that flexibility in the budget. So it's things like that that come up that, um, when individuals can show that there's a true community benefit to what they're doing, like to be able to have the opportunity to be supported, so.
Yeah, no, I.
That's what that was.
I appreciate that.
Anything else you want to change on yours?
I guess I have one comment that there are a number of times in, in all of the departments, we see the phrase increase in order to match up to current whatever. I don't think I've yet seen decrease to match current.
I, I wish we could say that, but.
I think there are some where we could, actually.
Well, that probably is, but I don't care much, it's sort of what we're asking.
All right.
I mean, that's just, it's, it's been really difficult to, um, with the, I mean, when you go to the grocery store, it costs more and it costs more for us to purchase the things we need to as well.
You guys good with the commission budget?
I was hoping for an increase in pizza budget.
Increase in lunch for these long meetings. We good then?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm assuming it's your turn.
So, um, manager's budget, um, the first increase that you'll see on your justification sheet is for printing and publishing. Um, that's a pretty big increase, 15,000. What we like to do as we continually are challenged around filling vacant positions, is do broader advertisement around, um, um, our job vacancies. Michelle is attending every single, um, career fair, job fair, student career fair that she can possibly attend. We have to have handouts and things to provide these individuals and we've been doing a lot of that. Um, we'd like to be able to do more and do it in a little bit more professional capacity, to really, um, hopefully be able to, you know, entice people and, and show them that we're a professional organization and want them to come work for us. Office supplies, uh, that's to meet the projection and the use. They do, so Amy and Bry are, Amy and Bry are, um, both part-time employees, but they've also been assigned to provide clerical support for, um, Jason and Roger as they don't have that. So, um, we're, we tend to go through a little bit more office supplies than we historically have. Most of those are pretty small, um, other than just trying to meet projections in current, um, markets. I mean, just the way the market's driven our supplies and things. And I'm willing to make any adjustments that you see necessary.
So just Ms. Vasquez is next.
Yes, um, in the finance department, the only thing that increased, of course, is going to be, um, the liability insurance. Um, it's pretty much to match up to the current projections as well as the, um, unemployment insurance. Um, there, I have been told that the insurances are going to increase at least about 150,000. So we have, I have budgeted for that increase. Other than that, it stays the same as last year.
Sean?
Are you saying 150,000 dollars in addition to this 80,000?
Excuse me, can you repeat that again?
Sorry. Are you saying 150,000 dollar insurance increase in addition to this 80,000 that's on your worksheet?
So, um, yeah, that's going to be, the 150,000 should be a breakdown between, um, the, um, unemployment. So any of the insurances that we have with the NMC. But I don't anticipate, the unemployment insurance isn't part of it. And as far as the law enforcement liability, that one is also going to be included in that. So I am anticipating the 150 plus the 80.
Right.
So I would add, um, just a little further explanation on the insurances. Um, since I've been sitting on the insurance pool board, it's been quite the eye-opening experience. Um, it's quite depressing, actually. So the insurance markets, um, property insurance, um, and we've heard horror stories of even our local property owners and their, um, their insurance horror stories just because we live near a forest. So property insurance coverages are going through the roof right now just because of all of the catastrophic losses from all over the nation. Um, so we're seeing huge increases there. The continued, um, number of lawsuits that are face, are facing our law enforcement and detention. Now we're starting to see some of the trends around the Civil Rights Bill and starting to see some of those come in. Um, we've, there's been some settlements. Um, so there was, uh, one last week that a jury awarded. It was a $33 million verdict for a lady that fell outside of a restaurant. Los Cruces Public Schools just settled a $41 million lawsuit. That was, that was, um, a jury verdict, so, and that was an employment matter. So that is driving, um, the New Mexico County Insurance Authority to really look at how do we develop what is, um, a good safety net, if you will. Um, so they conducted a capital adequacy, um, looking at how much capital do we need to be able to pay these claims based upon these trends. And so that's part of the increase that we've budgeted in there, um, is, is that. As well as we're probably going to see premium increases in that. We're also anticipating premium increases on health insurance. Um, we don't see any of our insurance going down. Those days of, well, you did really good, so the pool's going to give you a break. Probably not going to see that anytime soon either. So it's, um, it's pretty alarming, um, just looking at all those trends and the number of lawsuits and the things that, um, we're continuing to see. Not, not a very good future.
You know what, we're also seeing around the country is insurance companies that are simply not offering coverage on certain things.
Well, and just.
Both individual and to counties, municipalities and companies.
So county insurance authority couldn't get reinsurance anymore. They had one, um, one firm that was, um, willing to even bid on that. And it was like four, it was like four times what the premium was before. So, um, they took some money that they had in reserves and created their own reinsurer. So they're, they are their own reinsurer now, just trying to be creative to be able to offset the continuing costs of, um, these increases. So I just don't see any way, um, around that. And I don't see those costs coming down anytime soon.
It's only going to get worse.
So we good on that? Yes, sir? Good? Thank you. So that covered everybody, right? So moving on to the next item is going to be the, uh, Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, uh, 2026 to 2030, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the board. Um, it's this time, the time again to start looking at our Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal years 2026 through 2030. Uh, this year, uh, DFA has moved up this deadline significantly. Typically, it was due in September, this year it is due in July. Uh, so at this point, I just wanted to get this on your radar to begin having discussions with you all about, uh, what priority projects you would like to see. Uh, on this document, uh, emails have also been sent out to our department heads and elected officials asking for any infrastructure projects that they, um, would like to see incorporated into the ICIP. Um, and just as a refresher, uh, what the ICIP is, is a planning tool that establishes priorities for anticipated infrastructure projects, covers a five-year fiscal period, and it is, uh, updated annually and submitted to the state. It is not a wish list, it's not a funding application or a funding source. Uh, this is a plan that establishes our priorities, uh, priority projects and helps us identify and focus on our critical needs projects. Uh, this document also increases our funding opportunities as certain funding agencies oftentimes will use this ICIP when bidding projects for making awards. And ICIP projects should create a new fixed asset. They should enhance an existing fixed asset, um, have a life expectancy of at least 10 years, be ready to proceed, typically over 10,000 dollars, and have good estimates. Uh, and at this point, um, we can begin discussions. I will also be conducting some public meetings, as I have in the past, in, um, in MIBRIS, uh, here at this building and typically at the fairgrounds to get some public input on what the communities would like to see beyond this, this list as well. So I stand for any questions or any discussion at this point.
So, looking at this list, I'm trying to find the word. You know, what we were given this year, did we, I mean, have we brought some of these amounts? Or is there something that, some projects that were already funded that we can say, okay, we're at our point? Those need to come off the list?
Yes, so some of the 2024 legislative appropriations that were slated to receive this year are 500,000 dollars for Baton Park Veterans Memorial Facility, uh, 50,000 dollars for conference center improvements, 100,000 dollars for detention center improvements, 375,000 dollars for fairgrounds improvements, and 150,000 dollars for Hila Community Center, uh, construction. Which is numbers one, three, five, six, and eight on our, on the existing ICIP, which you have before you.
So we're actually talking about the 2026 slot.
2030.
Yeah.
I think that's right. Mr. Chair, just out of curiosity, uh, since you've kind of been the main proponent of the vocational school idea, where is that at?
I, I wish I could.
You stole that thought right out of my head.
I, I wish I could really answer that. We're, we're, we've been having discussions with, uh, as you know, with Santa Clara. And you, I don't know if you've read about it, or I guess really Shepherd. Dr. Shepherd has been having conversations with Santa Clara on purchasing the armory. Some of us still think that it might be better. Some of us still think that it might be better just to build between Baird and Hurley on that lot that, uh, is, I believe it's thirty-five acres at Freeport would donate to Western New Mexico University. What we're at on that, and, and I knew that was gonna come up, is Dr. Monzanadis has been working on it now, and he's, uh, been, uh, as a matter of fact, we just sent, uh, some information to our US Senator Lujan to try to help us with some of the money, uh, building that, been having conversations with our Lieutenant Governor. The, the focus is that we do need these programs, we, we do need to increase the workforce by giving opportunities for people that wanna do some of these, uh, vocational trainings. So right now, um, I'm going around in circles because we still need to probably sit down and hopefully by the next time we go through this, is actually decide what are we gonna do, what's our US Senators thought on it, our Lieutenant Governors, our Governors, and, and, and look at it a little, uh, look at it a little further, especially is it, where is it gonna be? You know, thirty-five acres gives it room to expand down the road compared to, you know, the money that may go into the old armory to get this up to date and all that, but there is a big difference, I think, uh, from eight million dollars to thirty-five million dollars. So that's what's being discussed right now, so I don't know where we're at to say it needs to stay at two or it doesn't, but I should know something here soon.
So can I ask a follow-up question to that? There is vocational space on the existing campus. Is that space maximized?
At Western? At, at the university itself?
Yep.
I believe so.
I mean, there has been VOTEC programs up there for a long time that haven't been tremendously successful.
Right, and I think what-
Is the space maximized?
I think what they're trying to do is make space to expand on it. And have, you know, because right now I think there's only a certain, certain, uh, things that they offer, I think they're trying to ma- maximize it, maximize it more, and I think put in more, like the plumbing, the construction, uh, try to expand more on what they offer, which they're hoping will bring in more people, so if we keep that, it may be maximized to where we're still leaving people that wanna apply out.
So, is, um, is tuition to vocational school covered under the free tuition program in, at, in New Mexico?
That I don't know, but I believe it would because they're enrolling into the university, so my thing would be right now, no, I don't know.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because, um, whether we spend eight or thirty-five million dollars on this project, um, that's all capital spending, correct? And so where is the operational expending, operational expenditures gonna come from? From maintenance of the building to programs? And I'm particularly asking that with the thought in mind that if, if it's tuition-free, and somebody should correct me if I'm headed down the wrong road here, but if it's tuition-free, then that means there's, has to be state money that supports schools, right, universities? So, um, the university isn't supporting itself by charging tuition if it's free, so the state has to come up with the funding. And so what is the after-build funding plan for this idea?
I don't really wanna answer for Dr. Shepherd, but I don't think he's too concerned with that, I think that money will come in for, you know, the universities have their own state monies that come in, their budgets increase, I think that's where he's headed with that.
Okay, so I would hope that's where he's headed with that, but it is of concern to me in that if we spend all this capital money and we are not able to operate it afterwards.
No, that's a good question, and, and, you know, I, I, the only thing I can tell you, I can have Dr. Shepherd come in or, or Dr. Monzanadis come in at some point, but, uh, that has not really been a concern from them, you know, that they bring up, so I wouldn't know how to really answer it. I mean, they've been on board with this and they wanna expand, so maybe I'll just have one of those two come in.
I think it would be really helpful because, um, I'm gonna have a hard time putting it in the top five if I don't know what that plan is.
Right, and I know that our Lieutenant Governor has been pretty adamant on seeing a plan, which is right, and rightfully so.
Right.
I mean, he's dealing with, with state money, and I don't know where they're at on that or how they're doing on that.
Great, thank you.
You know, the other thing here that I wanna talk a little about is Baton Memorial Park improvements, so a while back, five hundred thousand dollars was awarded to us, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Charlene, our Lieutenant Governor really helped us out and our Governor and, and our Senator and Representative, we asked for five hundred thousand dollars, what was gonna happen, or what was being talked about, and, uh, some of the veterans groups reached out to me, reached out to our Lieutenant Governor, is to build a building for five offices, training and classroom, because as you know, that they, um, where they have spaces, they can't have their meetings, sometimes they're just, you know, wow, you can't meet here anymore because of this, because of that, so that was part of the, that was part of the plan there, so what ended up happening, I don't know if you guys remember, uh, our Governor had given our veterans group three hundred thousand dollars to part of the sidewalks lining in the forgotten memorial. Well, when we went in after, to try to complete that design, it, the final price came up to seven hundred thousand dollars. So what is, we're thinking, and Randy and Charlene can tell me about, talk to me about this a little bit more, so what ended up happening, I think, is that we're gonna try to use some of this money to be able to finish that project. Right? No, changed?
Well, the problem is the, more than likely, we're not gonna see the grant agreement for the five hundred thousand by the time the three hundred thousand expires. And so, um, the Lieutenant Governor was gonna check on being able to extend the three hundred thousand, so the three hundred thousand was for one year, correct? If I looked at that grant agreement right, um, so it expires in June. I don't have any high hopes that we are gonna have a, but what we talked about is we could fund, the county could fund the shortfall to get the sidewalk project done. But I think we have the money to do that.
I know I sent the Lieutenant Governor that information you sent me, and I know he's busy, but maybe I need to touch base with him because I had asked if the Governor could, um, give us an extension or figure something out?
If they can extend that, then that, yes, that works perfectly, but if we can't get an extension for the three hundred K, um, we can't, and, or unless they wanna hurry up and get us the grant agreement like in a couple weeks.
I, I can, I can reach out to him this week and see what, where, where he's at, 'cause he does have that information.
And ideally if, ideally if the three hundred thousand could be extended, since that was the Governor's emergency funding, that, that's her purview to spend, and she's the one that appropriated, and perhaps if she unders, clearly understands the circumstances, that would be the ideal situation, but-
I will, I will ask and, and get you guys an answer for the next meeting, but, you know, I know that's been in the works too, trying to ask for an extension on that. If for some reason we can't get that extension, is this a project that can be phased?
Not exactly, um, but I, I think that the county can come up with the additional money to, I mean, we're looking at two hundred and something.
Uh, so the amount of the original award is three hundred thousand, of that we paid some design, uh, fee to get this, to get the sidewalk and the path designed, so we have two hundred and fifteen thousand, uh, eight hundred dollars left in this grant. Um, as you recall, when we went out to bid for it, we received zero bids, uh, at this point we were looking at either CES or statewide price agreement to try to find a contractor, we did, we did locate and they did submit a proposal for it, and that proposal came in at four hundred and twenty-four thousand, so at this point the difference, the shortage that we're looking at is two hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
And the engineers have gone back and looked at, you know, what are some of the things that they think are, I mean, the bids are just coming in too high, I mean, even the engineers say that, then we can't pinpoint why they're coming in so high, um, that's not really a big project, um, but, um, I'm not sure that it can be phased, but I, I think we can, if we can't get the extension from the Governors, um, I think we can come up with the two hundred thousand to get this project across the finish line.
Is the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar balance of three hundred thousand, the three hundred thousand that we don't yet have a grant agreement for? I'm so confused.
The three hundred thousand needs to be extended.
Yeah.
It's an additional three hundred and-
It's an original three hundred thousand the Gov. has to be extended. What we don't have a grant agreement for is the capital outlay, five hundred thousand. My concern obviously is not being able to spend the two fifteen.
Right.
I know there's some inefficiencies in mobilization, but I don't know why you couldn't do part of a sidewalk project, then come back and do the rest of it when you have the funding. Two hundred thousand's a big chunk to say that we'll commit when, when doing it the other way would allow us to use the capital outlay. But I guess, but again, I don't know how much, how inefficient it would be to do it in two parts.
Well, my guess is it'd be easier to get the extension than it would be to get a grant agreement at this point.
Right, and my thought process here is what if we don't get either?
Right.
I'd rather get started and then stop and then get started again.
And I do know that this is one of, uh, our Governor's, uh, requests that she really wants to see through, so hopefully I can get ahold of somebody this week and, and then we'll go from there, but, and then maybe we can go, I, I mean, I know it doesn't seem right to go halfway and then later halfway, that's a hard thing to do, but we, you know, I'd rather do that if we don't get the extension, but anyway, other than that, on the capital, uh, list, I'm, I'm pretty well open to whatever you guys think.
Well, I'd like to have some answers to those questions.
Well, we still, we still have, well, we don't have time on the three hundred thousand or two, whatever's left, but we'll get that going here soon, but, uh, yeah. We'll, we'll, we have time for, for the Vocational Center to get some, somebody here to talk about that.
And as, as the weeks progress, uh, and departments submit any ICIP, I'll work with the county manager, we'll draft, um, we'll have a working draft presented to you so that way you guys can have an idea of where some of these projects are, are coming in and then where you guys wanna prioritize those.
And so we need to have it completed by the end of July, is that what you said?
Yes, the, the ICIP will need to be approved by resolution at the July meeting because it is due on the twelfth.
Twelfth?
So it's typically right, I think it's falling right, right after, um, the regular commission meeting.
Is this something that you want to see regularly, um, like each month until, well, I guess we only have two months to go?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
For discussion purposes, just, so we're all on the same page?
Yeah. What do you plan on, um, holding the public meetings, Randy?
I haven't decided yet, they'll probably be within the next month.
Okay.
We're in April, right? So can we put-
We're almost done with April.
Can we put this back on for me? And then, uh, I can hopefully have one of Shepherd, Dr. Shepherd or Dr. Monzanadis come in for the VOTEC, and then the other piece, I'll get you guys an answer as soon as I can.
Please, thank you.
Anything else on this commissioners? Okay. So moving on to new business, it's gonna be item J, consideration of bargain unit contract for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six.
Mr. Chairman, um, you have been provided the final, um, bargain unit contract for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six, that, um, the union, I'm gonna let them speak, but, um, we've both agreed, management and union have both agreed, um, the final step would be your approval. Your, your union president, vice president, and patient waiting for this item. But it's ready for your approval.
Okay, can't hear you.
It's ready for your approval.
It's ready for approval. You guys okay with it?
Hello, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, um, I'm the union president, Mr. Benavides, um, our union did get together, we did take a vote, we are ready to go and sign this contract as well, um, we've been working very good with, uh, Mrs. Webb, I think we're ready to, to get this contract over with, I know it's been a long time coming, uh, the only thing we just ask is for your guys' approval as well, but both sides are , are ready to get this signed and put it into effect.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
Second motion.
So a motion, a second by Commissioner Brown, do we have any discussion?
Do I need a happy dance?
Huh?
Is it acceptable if I need a happy dance?
We'd like to see that.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Do you guys wanna skip the next item?
I don't know.
Is it?
And we can have a next, or do we need-
I don't know how urgent it is.
Absolutely.
What? What if I just give you food for thought and then you guys can think about it and we can do it against another time?
That'd be helpful to have all the commissioners present.
Yeah. So you want, just go in there, food for thought, and then come out and move on?
Sure.
Okay, can I have a motion to go to the-
Do you all have food for thought?
They didn't do the pizza budget.
No, no, pizza budget. Um, so like to have a motion to go to executive session in accordance with NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, section ten, ten dash fifteen dash one, sub H and nine.
So moved.
I was second, and I'm guessing because of what you said, item twelve, any action is not gonna happen.
Yes, no action will happen. And, uh, so I have a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Brown, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a roll call, Madam Court?
Yes, uh, Chairman Ponce, Commissioner Edwards, and Commissioner Brown, I will ask individually, um, are you all aware that you will be entering into executive session? Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Chairman Ponce?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.